Nope. Okay, I'm ready.
Let's rock and roll.
Oh, thank you. Hey Kathleen, hey Laura.
Hello Kate.
Hello Laura.
Hi. Hey, fun parade on Saturday, huh?
It's very nice, great turnout.
Nice weather.
Nice and crisp. Yeah. Hey Jay. So I'm just double checking, is Derek Corse see with us this evening, Jim? He's there.
He's coming in now.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm here.
Hey Derek.
Hey, how's it going?
Good. Hey, listen, great parade on Saturday, so much fun, well organized, thing went very, very well, I think. Um, thank you so much. I think out of our needed that on Saturday, it was, it was a lot of fun. And exuberance was going on, the fun kids and everything else. And I'm so glad the horses were behind my cute little red car, not in front of it.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks everyone for showing off. I appreciate the support.
Thank you very much. So Derek, I'm gonna call the Public Works Committee to order. Um, we have two motions that are before us this evening, and one of them is for seventy-five thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars. We trucks to purchase two twenty-two F-150s for the park and forestry departments to replace one two thousand and three truck. So could you go over that first with us, please?
Uh, yeah, so um, it's actually to replace two two thousand and three trucks. Uh, both are in a pretty rough shape. Um, I'm gonna try and share my screen here to show you some pictures if that's okay.
Certainly, thank you.
If this works. Is this working?
Yep.
Okay, so this is um, this is a picture of the first truck here. Um, as you can see, some of the the panel rot here. Just um over the fenders. Um, so you can see, I don't know if you can see from this, this area here, but these two body panels don't align. That's usually a sign of rotted bed rails. So that's something that would need to be replaced, really can't put any weight in the truck on with that sort of issue. Um, here's another view from this side. See how they don't, don't line up. Um, so this, this is car three, this is one of the two thousand and three GMC Sierras, uh, which is in that memo. I'll show you pictures of the, the second one, which is in much worse condition. Let's see. That's for the other thing we're talking about here. Okay, so this is the second one. This is the other forestry truck. This is uh what we term F-one. So as you can see, we have the fender rot here. Um, this is a view of underneath the cab where the floor is rotted out. Besides, the sound's not as bad.
I, I feel like I'm looking at the same images. Is, is anybody else seeing what I'm not seeing?
Well, they're, they're two trucks.
No, I, I just see like, I see like a carriage.
Yeah.
And bears.
Yep. So we're showing so Derek was showing like screen Derek. We're showing image fourteen seventeen, fourteen seventeen, fourteen forty twenty-three. And we're not seeing like a clear picture.
Okay, hold on. Oh, so you see in this right here?
Yeah.
Okay, let's see here. Let's try this again. Can you see this? Did it change?
Not yet.
No.
You might be, are they opening on a different screen?
Possibly, yeah.
So you might have to choose that one to share.
Sorry, I've never done this before, believe it or not.
That's all right. I do it all the time.
So let's do this, share screen. Okay. So how about now?
There you go.
All right. Sorry about that. Okay, so as I was saying, this is um, this is a picture of the first truck here. And um, there's just some pictures of the, the body rot. That's the front quarter near the driver's side. Is the rear above the fender. Okay, uh, this is what I was talking about with the, the rotted bed rails. See how this um this groove here doesn't line up. It's supposed to line up. That's usually a sign of rotted cross members of the bed. Which would need to be replaced. Um, here's just the opposite side. You can see how it's totally out of line here. So I'm gonna skip through these. This is for the other thing, um, the memo included. So this is the second truck. As you can see, we have the um more body rot above the uh, the wheel well here. This is underneath the cab. This is where the floor is actually rotting out. Um just some more fender rot here. There's another view of, of the cab corner that's rotting out underneath the cab. Um, and then another uh, view of the front quarter panel that's rotting. And you know, just the back bumper that's about ready to fall off. Um, so as you can see, these trucks are in, in pretty rough shape. Um, and this is just the um, you know, the exterior issues with the truck, not to mention this uh, the second truck I showed, the four-wheel drive doesn't work anymore. Um, and you know, there's just a variety of issues with the um you know, just the age and the wear and tear on the vehicles are pretty much twenty-year-old vehicles at this point.
Thank you Derek. Does anyone have any questions or comments, please?
Derek, um, Kate, Kate man.
Counselor Deesimo, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice President Jackson. Derek, I'm just curious, what is your like maintenance? Do you have like a maintenance protocol for your trucks? I, I understand they obviously take a lot of use uh, and abuse from the kind of work that you do, but I'm just wondering like, uh, is there any preventative maintenance that could be taken to, and I know these are twenty years old. Uh, but do you have a process in place, I guess, to, to slow down uh, this kind of rust and other deterioration?
Yeah, well, we, you know, we wash the trucks as much as we can. We try to do it at least once a week. Uh, part of the problem is these trucks live outside and they live uh, in an area that's not paved. So they're being parked on basically a dirt parking lot for their lifetime. So when you, when you start doing that, um, the moisture seeps up from the ground and gets on the, the undercarriage of these trucks and it um it affects, it affects the life of them. So unfortunately, that's kind of what the hand we're dealt. You don't have a garage big enough to store, you know, everything we have. A lot of the bigger, more high-priced vehicles go in the garage, like the bucket truck and and the, the large crane truck we have. So unfortunately, these get the low end of the stick and they uh, they end up living outside for most of their lives.
May I follow up Derek? How many trucks do you ordinarily have like parked outside versus inside? Do you have any idea?
Oh, yeah, all, all of our trucks are parked outside except for the two high-priced vehicles. So the bucket truck and the crane uh, live inside and then everything else is outside.
Okay. All right, thank you Derek. Uh, thank you Kate.
You're welcome. Counselor Dolan, please.
Will these even pass inspection with that type of rot?
Uh, they probably get through this year, but after that, um, it, it might be an issue. The, the good news is the frame is in okay shape and that's really where the uh, the inspection issues uh, come up. But um, you know, if, if this, you know, once you have rot, it's very difficult to, you know, at, at least slow down. Um, you know, and ends up being an issue over time. It would take some serious money and um, labor to, you know, we'd have to cut out all the rot, do some replacement on the panels. It's just not worth it unfortunately on, on trucks of this age.
Thanks. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Thank you. Um, moving right along. So Derek, we have one other item that's in a committee that is from your office. But it has to do with the accreditation of the zoo.
Yep.
The zoo and um, if you could update us on that because obviously Cape and Park Zoo is one of our, is, is one of the jewels of the city. And so we would like to keep that going and we want to know what's going on with that and how we can help prevent it from not being accredited.
Okay, so um, our accreditation is due in two thousand and twenty-two, which is uh, again this year. So we submitted our paperwork uh, to get the process starting on that. Um, usually the accreditation will take place sometimes towards the end of the summer. So we're looking at the, the August, September time range when um, representatives from the AZA will be down to the zoo and they'll do their inspection. And they hit on a whole, um, you know, a whole list of things that they'd like to see. Um, some of the issues um, that I presented in the memo uh, to council have to do with some of the structural, um I'd say deficiencies within the zoo that would definitely be red flags for um, a re, a re-accreditation. Now, um, I'm trying to go through the zoo and we're trying to target all of these areas that, you know, would be a problem. And we're trying to address that before, you know, the creditors show up and, and you know, they get eyes on it. So um we're trying to do our due diligence to, to fix these issues so we can be accredited once again. Uh, unfortunately, a lot of these issues cost money that the zoo doesn't have. So that's why we're speaking today.
Does anyone have any questions? Anyone from my committee? Does anyone from my committee go to the zoo ever?
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Deesimo.
Thank uh, thank you Derek. The um why, uh, the replacement of the wrought iron fence, uh, why do we have to replace it? Is it not a repairable? I mean wrought iron is wrought iron, so.
So um, the fence itself is fine. So part of my plan is um to use the fence that is currently at the zoo over by the Wolfington Fountain. I don't know if everyone is familiar. But the, the fence replacement is um, needed at the Wolfington Fountain. It's been on capital improvements. Um, so I'd like to repurpose the fence that is at the zoo for the Wolfington Fountain and kind of kill two birds with one stone. Uh, the main issue with this fence at the zoo is that it does not meet safety standards. If you, I wish I, I forgot to take a picture of it to show you, but if you've ever been to the zoo, it's a decorative fence. It has sharp points at the top. And those sharp points are in direct violation of a lot of safety standards because the fence is low enough where if someone uh, tripped and fell, or a small child tripped and fell, they could get hurt by those, those points on the fence. Um, and with the proximity to the splash pad, that's an extra, you know, layer of things that we need to be cognizant of. Um, you know, because God forbid something happens, you know, that, that, they're just, everything's way too close in that area where something bad could happen.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Dolan.
When we talked about the Wolfen and found it, found it a while back, didn't we discuss maybe just completely removing it, the fence?
Yeah, there was discussion of that. Um, but one of the issues with removing the fence is that it prevents people from going into the bowl. Which even with the fence, it's kind of a struggle, but um, by removing that fence, it's just gonna open up another can of worms of, you know, people, you know, getting into that bowl and something bad happening. Uh, we, we just had the bowl recoded um, to prevent some leakage. So now it's extra slippery in there. So that's that's kind of, we need something to block people from getting in there, or at least give the illusion that you can't get in there.
Right. Thank you.
And Derek, we want to keep our, our zoo accredited. So yes, I'm hoping that the council passes this.
Mm-hmm.
Cause the zoo again is one of the jewels of our city. We're very, very lucky to have that. Extremely lucky. Any other comments or questions from any other councils here this evening?
Well, I just have an additional comment with the fence.
Please.
Um, with the replacement of the fence, currently the decorative fence only goes halfway around this pond. Um, if we were to replace this fence, uh, because it's chain link, black chain link, uh, similar to like a in-ground pool fence, we would be able to go all the way around the uh, the pond and therefore opening up more space for additional exhibits within the zoo. So it um, it would not only improve a safety aspect of the zoo, but it would also improve um, the zoo's future for, you know, additional exhibits and more reason for people to uh, to check out the zoo on a yearly basis.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Concerns? Thank you. Thank you very much Derek for attending this evening. We are going to uh I'm gonna vote to bring this out of committee this evening and then also because it's a regular meeting after seven PM. At the meeting, the council will do a full vote on this this evening.
Okay, uh, now included with my letter, um, there were also two additional things that needed to be done at the zoo. I just wanted to show you some pictures of it so you could uh, get a grasp of uh, what we were talking about here.
Please.
Uh, so let me try to share screen again and do this right. Okay, so are we working here?
Yes, yes.
All right, so this is the grain shed. Now, um as you can see, there is a large crack from some foundation settling that has occurred. Um, and again, this would be a big, big red flag um, with AZA. Um, so this is where we store a lot of the food, the grain for the animals. And with having this large crack here, uh, basically all the way down one side of the building. Um, you know, the, the building is now not watertight, um, you know, rodents can get in there. So it's a big problem that needs to be addressed. Um, so that's one of the things that um, is additionally on this letter um, for the zoo. The second thing is the staircase here. This is staircase between uh, nocturnal and the rainforest. And the degradation of this uh, the stairs here, um, you know, is making this railing extremely loose. Um, so this whole thing needs to be rebuilt so people can actually utilize the staircase. Right now, it's been shut down because of safety reasons, but uh, in an ideal world, uh, both aesthetically and you know, for um, ease of use within the zoo, uh, we'd like to get this back open. So those are the two additional things that are uh, within the memo. Any other questions?
That's a good project.
Hmm. Thank you Derek.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks for having me and thanks again for coming to the parade. We, I appreciate all the support.
Thank you. Good evening.
You too.
So from the docket of December seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, I entertain a motion to appropriate seventy-five thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars from account one zero 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 dash three five nine zero 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 undesignated fund balance free cash general government to account one six five zero one zero 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 dash five eight seven zero three nine park heavy truck to purchase two twenty-twenty-two Ford F-150s for the park and forestry departments.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Dolan. Do I have any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. From the docket of December seventh, twenty-one. I entertain a motion to appropriate seventy-three thousand two hundred and four dollars and eighty cents from account one zero 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 dash three five nine zero 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 undesignated fund balance free cash general government to account one six six zero one zero 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 dash five eight two five one three Cape and Park Zoo, building improvements to fund projects at Cape and Park Zoo and zoo that are safe, safely and well-being of the patrons and animals in addition to meeting requirements of the AZA accreditation for two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Dolan. Do I have any questions or comments? Thank you very much. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. I intend to, oh, so tonight I am actually gonna bring these out as motions at the regular meeting and I, I believe you all have copies of that. It was addition to what we already had. Um, so hearing none, hearing none of the questions, um I would ask for the German.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at let me just double check the, six forty-five. Thank you.
I'd like to call Budget Appropriations to order at six forty-five. All right, I got a few things to bring out tonight. One second, I'm having some technical issues. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, um, I have sixteen motions that I'm bringing out tonight. And the reason that I held these is I wanted to ensure that I had the opportunity to speak with the mayor, Jeremy in depth to understand exactly what the impact um, these motions have. So Ash I stand firm that I want to see a lot of contribution made to the stabilization account to help give the city financial stability in the upcoming fiscal years. You know, after speaking with Deb and Jeremy and just kind of seeing what's going on, I am concerned about the upcoming fiscal years. Um, that being said, um, what I'd like to do is regardless who the budget chair is in January, I would really urge whoever's sitting in this chair, um, if it's me, you know, will um, make the ask, but I'd like to see if Mark Fratato and Jeremy Stahl can come before the council, kind of to give us insight on how the fiscal twenty-three budget is shaping up, what concerns they might have, how do we get out in, in front of those. Um, all sixteen motions, when you look at them and I'll give you a brief explanation. These are necessities at this point. Um, so why don't we just jump right in? From the docket of December seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, I entertain a motion to transfer ninety-nine dollars ninety-eight cents from account one six one zero one zero 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 dash five five one zero four zero library supplies to account one six one zero one zero 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 dash five seven eight zero two zero library previous year bills for a WB Mason fiscal twenty-one bill.
Second.
Thank you, Rick. Um, yeah, this is straightforward. We're seeing a lot of these um, previous year bills. What I'm finding out is most of it has to do with A, when they came in, has to do with COVID. Could it also be, um, and we'll see this when we get to the schools, um issues with the state bid list. Um, any other questions, thoughts, concerns on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three to nothing. I entertain a motion appropriate forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars from account six zero 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 dash three five nine zero 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 wastewater enterprise fund routine earnings to account six zero 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 dash five two one zero two zero wastewater enterprise funds lights in power to replenish funds for a state compliance program.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. Um, again, this is to replenish funds from the um from the retained earnings where they're, we're in a situation where they're pretty healthy right now and this is again um, to fund a state required health and safety compliance program, which is now required to replace funds previously transferred from account N-N-O dot six zero zero five two one zero two zero lights and power. So this is just to replenish for work that's already been done. Any other questions, thoughts or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three, nothing. I entertain a motion to, uh, from the docket of December seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, I entertain a motion appropriate forty-nine thousand two hundred dollars from account six one zero zero dash three five nine zero 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 water enterprise fund retain earnings to account six one zero zero dash five three zero one seven zero water enterprise fund meter sewer to meet a requirement for the Water Management Act withdrawal permit.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. Uh, this is for engineering services associated for the city of Attleboro Water Department to complete a meter survey and evaluation for large water meters associated with the scope. Um, the city owns about a hundred twenty-two meters. Scope of service is um, essentially Scope of service is, um, essentially review up to three years worth of historical billing for each of the city-owned accounts, which I said is approximately a hundred and twenty-two. Conduct a site survey of each of a hundred and twenty-two in order to complete, collect and assess if existing meter has data logging techno, uh, technology capabilities, um, to initialize this during the site survey. And then finally to provide a draft technical memorandum summar- summarizing the findings and recommended improvements, including panel, uh, planning for level costs for the recommendations. Any questions, thoughts, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty-one, I entertain a motion to appropriate five hundred thousand from account one zero 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 dash three five nine zero 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 undesignated fund balance free cash general government to account one one two four one zero 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 dash five nine six zero 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 citywide stabilization fund.
Second.
Thanks, Todd. Um, yeah, this is just to put five hundred thousand dollars from the certified free cash into the stabilization. It's a start. Personally, I'd like to see more go in there, but it's a start. Uh, which, um. I figured you wouldn't be too, uh, you, you'd agree with me on that one, Rick. Um. Look, anything that goes in on the stabilization account, I think is best for the city. This way here, I mean, pref- personally, if I had my preference, all of the free cash would be put into the stabilization account where it would take eight, eight votes to pull it out, so we would have the appropriate uh, scrutinization, uh, scrutiny rather. So, uh, but that being said, any other questions, thoughts, concerns on this?
So, so this, sorry, excuse me.
Yep, Councilor.
So I, I, I thought we were putting more in. Um, I see that there's, there's another item for four hundred thousand to go into the stabilization fund.
That's, we're, I'll get to that in one second.
Okay, yep, perfect.
Yep, it's, yeah, that'll make sense in a second. Um, the mayor did say that h- his intention is to, when all is said and done at the end of it, have one point five to two million dollars, um, put into stabilization account. It's a good, even that's a good start. I think, you know, when we look at fiscal twenty-three and fiscal twenty-four, you know, we just need to make sure that we have the funds available.
Agreed.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty-one, I entertain a motion to appropriate twenty-seven thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents from account one zero 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 dash three five nine zero 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 undesignated fund balance free cash general government to the following. Five thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-two cents to account one one four one one zero 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 dash five five eight three three zero assess a copy is seven thousand one hundred nine thirty dollars, uh, third, seven thousand one hundred nine dollars and thirty cents to account one one four six one zero 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 dash five five eight three three zero collector copy is fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and twenty-four cents to account one two one zero one zero 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 dash five five eight three three zero police copy is.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. Um, these are for copiers, um, and the reality is the city makes a lot of copies, probably more than we think. Um, there are twenty-five copiers that are multi-function machines in city offices. Um, that's, you know, made a combined four point seven million copies, the oldest of which was purchased in two thousand and three. We regularly place high-use units and rotate those to offices with less volume. And we're seeing that in the, um, council office. But there are four that'll be on their useful life with two of them no longer able to be serviced by a maintenance provider. So that's why, um, I think you'll see some of these go out as surplus. The fifth was purchased in twenty fourteen, um, having made three hundred and thirty-six, one hundred and twenty-eight copies. Um, so this is really to help um, with the copies. Yes, Councilor Conti.
Um, Jay, I missed the backup on this. Uh, please get two copies.
Let me find out exactly. I've got it right here. I just gotta find, give me one sec.
I know, we've gotten tons of paper.
I know, which was photocopied ironically.
I can't wait to digitize.
I'm with you on that one, Kate, believe me.
So I'm assuming that these are all, um, copy of scanners.
They are copy scanners.
And a bizup's like a, like a bizup, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
But I think you're right with the.
The only reason why I asked the question, Jay, is because the police amount is twice what the others are.
Yeah.
And unless they ask for a super duper, oh my gosh, copier, they must be getting two of them.
I believe they are. I just want to find out for sure. You know what? I'll look at it and I'll update that at the, uh.
Sure, that's good.
Okay, uh, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to nothing. Whip it along, guys. All right, from the docket of December seventh, I entertain a motion to authorize payment of invoices. Yes?
Two copiers.
It's found it. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Todd.
Seven thousand, seven thousand.
Okay. I'll move on now. Um, I entertain a motion to authorize the payment of invoices to the Attleboro Y M C A in the amount of twenty-three thousand five hundred sixty dollars and ten cents. On behalf of the planning department, no transfer is needed.
Second.
Thank you. Um, so this is part of the C D B G essentially in the long. Um, these are services, we're obligated to pay this and this isn't a, um, request for funding, this is a transfer. But, um, this is needed. I spoke with Deb, this is needed as part of the C D B G and, uh, the services provided by the Y M C A. Questions, thoughts, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty-one, I entertain a motion to appropriate sixty-three hundred dollars from account one zero 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 dash three five nine zero 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 undesignated fund balance free cash general government to account A four two two zero zero seven zero dash five three zero five zero zero. Um, school maintenance of building contracted services to repair the old schoolhouse at Hill Roberts Elementary School.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. So what this is, in the next one, it's the same. They have, um, so at Studley, they have the Mugsville Schoolhouse, Hill Roberts, they have the old schoolhouse. These are historical buildings. A lot of people thought they were actually owned by the, um, Historical Commission, but it is actually owned by the school. In order to get the work done before the winter weather, they're asking for this to be done now. I asked Mark Fratato, you know, what, what they used for and, um, they're used for classes, they're used to be, um, for classrooms to go back out and kind of give the students an idea of what it was to learn back in, dare I say, yesterday, days gone by. So, um, Councilor Conti.
I'm estimating this is one hundred times the original cost of the building.
I know. It's no inflation though. Yeah, I mean, I think that one, whenever we have an opportunity, uh, to preserve history and, you know, you looked at it, uh, I think this is a, a pretty good, good use of money to preserve that history.
In all seriousness, if I could just speak up, um, the, the, the old schoolhouse that's outside of Studley, I remember when it was discovered inside a building out on Steer Street and, um, they took the building down, saved the old schoolhouse, lifted it up, tracked it over there and renovated it. And, and, and all of the students that go to Studley go into that little schoolhouse and it is a very worthwhile personal historical experience and I fully support this. That can, that concludes my comments. Todd, I think we lost Jay.
Yeah, there he is. We got you.
All right, any questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes three to nothing. From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty-one, I entertain a motion appropriate sixteen thousand seven hundred forty dollars from account one zero 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 dash three five nine zero 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 undesignated fund balance free cash general government to account A four two two zero zero seven zero dash five three zero five zero zero school maintenance of building contract services to repair the Mugsville Schoolhouse at Studley Elementary.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, from the docket of November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, I entertain a motion to transfer seventeen thousand five hundred dollars from account one one two four one zero 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 dash five seven eight three zero zero citywide reserve fund for transfer to account one one four one one zero 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 dash five three zero one one eight assess G I S services to renew near map subscription.
Second.
Councilor Conti, anything on this?
Boy, uh, do I have something to say about this. Um, number one, Councilor Delisio, this is a shared service, which I know you're really big on.
Correct.
Uh, gets used by police department, the fire department, uh, the conservation agent, uh, planning department, and, 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 and. She's got, I think, twenty-five users on the system. Secondly, um, this seventeen thousand five hundred dollars is returned to the city in less than one month with proper usage. Um, I was instrumental in getting this into Attleboro because I have it in Taunton and, um, it's only getting better to the point where it now has artificial intelligence to alert our assessor when a roof line changes or, or a new deck is put up automatically without even having to review the data. So it's really gotten, um, quite advanced and that concludes my comments.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And, um, the only thing I would also add is that it's, um, I believe it's, it's GPS and satellite, so it can see if people are putting up sheds that they should have had vermin for and, you know.
It's, it's actually airplane. It's actually old school airplane twice a year, once in March and one it's in October, but it does exactly what you said. Uh, identifies new construction and, uh, or, or destruction.
Yep. It's actually a safety issue too, so this is really good stuff. So thank you for your, uh, work on getting that introduced. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. I entertain a motion to appropriate three hundred thousand from account one zero 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 dash three five nine zero 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 undesignated fund balance free cash general government to account one one two four one zero 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 dash five six, uh, five nine six three zero zero citywide contribution to special education stabilization funds.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. Uh, this will bring the stabilization account up to a million dollars. So I questioned with Deb Gould when I spoke with her earlier. I said, Deb, do we need this right now? I mean, you know, we've got a lot of other things coming down the line. And her response to me was, anything that goes into a stabilization account is a good thing because it can be repurposed if need be. So, um, Councilor Conti.
Jay, were you on the council when we had the McKinney Vento shock?
Yep.
So this is exactly why I think this is a good idea. Get it to a million, let it stay there. We probably won't need to put more in unless it gets depleted. But, um, this saves our checkbook and I, and I, and I, um, un- when we're, when we're surprised by unexpected expenses that we must pay, state mandates. So this stabilized, let, let me conclude to say that this stabilization fund is critical for us to be able to manage the state mandates in special education. And that concludes my comments.
Yeah, I totally, um, appreciate that and agree, Rick. Um, it's actually one of the reasons that, um, I was instrumental in, in introducing it several years back. Um, and I think the reality of the matter too is with McKinney Vinto, you know, I think there's concern with everything going on as we come out of COVID, we might see, uh, added expenses there. So I think this is fiscal, um, prudent fiscal planning. Any other questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We're just about done, folks. From, uh, the docket of November sixteenth, I entertain a motion to authorize the school department to pay previous year's school bills totaling fifty-nine thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents, thirty-four cents rather, including a Conica Minolta, um, Minolta bill and a W B Mason bill.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. Yeah, so this essentially, um, there were, there was a requ- requisition, there was some issues with the requisition when Deb looked at it. Um, it was left off the state bid list. It shouldn't have been left off the state bid list. There were some questions around the procurement and, and we're just about to process the school department. You know, nothing that they did was wrong by any stretch, but it led to the auditor's office kind of practicing the pause, holding still. So this is why they need to now, um, have the authorization to pay it. School committee was behind it, passed unanimously. Um, and then what'll happen is now it'll go back to Deb's office. Deb's gonna review it, make sure everything's all right and then authorize the payment from there. Any questions or concerns?
Big number.
It's a big number. It, it certainly is. Um, actually, when we get back, I have, um, an email from Mark Fratato that, let's see if I can pull it up real quick. All right, um. So it's ninety-nine due to contractual billing staff who were vendor was supposed to have us on the state contact list and didn't. That's when Deb, um, at the end of the year rightfully wouldn't process the payment. We went back to them, pointed out the error took till now to recalibrate and invoice everything. The rate they were charging us was actually a state correct rate, but the contract language was incorrect, so the obligation crossed fiscal years and here we are. From Mark Fratato. So it is a big knock, but it's a contractual nut, so. Any other questions, thoughts, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Three to nothing. Um, from the docket of November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, I entertain a motion to transfer four thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents from account one one two four one zero 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 dash five seven eight three zero zero citywide reserve fund for transfer to account one one four one one zero 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 dash five five eight zero one seven assesses monitors printers others to fund a new printer from the assessors office.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. Um, pulling up the notes. So this is in, uh, notes. Yeah, so on an annual basis, the assessors office is responsible for printing out essential forms, which I'm sure, Rick, you're familiar with all of the forms for taxpayers. Their current printer is on its way out, it's in poor condition, it jams, it leaves only one paper tray and the other's not working, which makes it difficult to do the printing jobs. This one will also have scanning capability, which will aid in digitally archiving, um, the records. Any questions, thoughts, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. From the docket of November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, I entertain a motion to transfer one thousand six hundred, um, one thousand six hundred dollars from account one one two four one zero 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 dash five seven eight three zero zero citywide uh, reserve fund for transfer to account one five four one one zero 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 dash five two four zero one one council on aging building maintenance to repair the lower level roof at the senior center.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. So this one and the next one, these are to repair, um. One's the roof where there's a leak, the other is the, um, cast iron drain pipe in the basement of the senior center. Uh, Rick, I think one, one year, probably five years ago, you and I were down there. I know Pete has been down there, especially that wrought iron pipe. It's stripping constantly. We know we're in need of a new senior center. Um, it's gonna take a while to get there. There's not even a feasibility study that was put on the capital improvements, hopefully this year. So I know there's a lot of talk that, hell yeah, we'll be able to just move to Highland or something like that. It's not the process and until we're able to get there and follow the process correctly, we need to make sure that we're taking care of some of these fixes and, and it might be duct tape and bubble gum and Band-Aid fixes, but they're necessary. Uh, Rick.
So, um, you know, this is one of the reasons why I thought the senior centers should have a, a maintenance budget of ten thousand dollars in their annual budget to sort of take it, to handle this routine maintenance. Um, it's prevailing ways, so the numbers get big fast, but really these are very low numbers for, um, maintaining that building, which, um, as we all know, is, I think, uh, close to the nineteenth century. I conclude my comments.
No, valuable add-on, Rick, I appreciate it. Um, so this is for the sixteen hundred for the, uh, lower level roof at the. Okay?
Thank you, Councilor Delisio. I totally agree. Councilor Conti, it's like, this building just needs like so much T L C. So yes, I am so in favor of this, taking care of it. Like, I know it's little numbers right now, but it's gonna end up being bigger numbers at some point, I know for sure, but yeah, so I'm all in favor of taking care of the building, the seniors.
Thank you, Vice President Jackson. And yeah, the reality is, you know, we've got to start the process to get the new one. It's not like, hey, I just want to move, uh, move buildings. Doesn't work that way. There is a process that needs to be followed. The seniors deserve it and we need to work towards that. Um, but yeah, we want to be careful that we don't get to the point where we're throwing good money off the bed. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. From the docket of November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, I entertain a motion to transfer sixty-five hundred dollars from account one one two four one zero 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 dash five seven eight three zero zero citywide reserve fund for transfer to account one five four one one zero 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 dash five two four zero one one council on aging building maintenance to repair cast iron drain pipe in the basement of the senior center.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. Any other questions, comments, concerns on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. From the docket of November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, I entertain a motion to transfer six hundred forty-five dollars from account one one two four one zero 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 dash five seven eight three zero zero citywide reserve, reserve fund for transfer to account one one four six one zero 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 dash five four two zero two zero collector office equipment to purchase a new typewriter for the collector's office.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Todd.
So, sorry. I was like, what year is it?
Typewriters have gotten expensive.
They have. No, 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 because let's be honest. Anymore, right? So with this, so keep in mind that um there are certain programs that the collector's office uses that's not on units. So they actually have to be typed in. But what ended happening is the um collector will buy refurbished typewriters. It's twenty twenty-one, almost twenty twenty-two. Lots are hard to find. They don't last as long. So that's what this is for. Uh, Council Jackson.
Thank you very much, Council D'Elcio. But I wanna tell you that also I just learned that also do that in the city clerk's office, cuz you have to have that typewriter in a certain line on a certificate. You know, whether it's a birth certificate or a death certificate, but you have to have a typewriter to type it in now still. And yeah, I'm having a difficult time. Steve was explaining that to me. I'm like, oh, my gosh. Yeah. So you have to have. And on top of that, since we use calls and calls has been extremely helpful because they're a local company. I mean, they're only on um Emery Street. They just closed. So, yes, it's very sad, right, Rick?
It is.
You drive down there cuz you ran out of ink and you just get the ink, get your pen, cuz I'm left-handed and I can only find left-handed pens pens down there. But yes, I know, it's so sad. So you wanna lose, use the local company. But yeah, and people still use some of these older typewriters and, yeah, it's a thing that we still do.
Yep, especially for the forms and you can't just print them out with everything. So certainly a necessity. Uh, any other questions, thoughts, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes three to nothing. And finally, from the document of November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. I entertain a motion appropriate four hundred thousand from, four hundred thousand dollars from account one zero 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 dash three five nine zero zero zero. Undesignated fund balance free cash, general government to account one one two four one zero 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 dash five nine six zero zero zero, citywide stabilization fund.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. So this is what um you were talking about earlier, Todd. And what we have is if you remember back in twenty eighteen, Barry Lacasse said, hey, what if your city takes on one point two million dollars for the the purpose to be um removing all the asbestos in the old school before it gets demolished? This way here prevents it from going airborne and potentially impacting the environment and the neighbors. But also, let's use that money to um, transfer the CTE equipment from the old school to the new school. What this is, this is the third payment of that one point two million dollars. And the purpose of this was to um take one point two million dollars off the total number of the debt exclusion to give some relief to the taxpayer. Any, uh, Council Cooper, President Cooper.
Thank you. Um, so I'm in full support of this. This is part of the plan, but the sale of the schools was also part of the plan. And we're winding down on the construction uh of that building. In in nine months, the students are going in and then they'll start tearing down the other one. Um, I challenge all of you to figure out what the deal is with the sale of the schools and get it on a on a cadence that is predictable. And that can happen so that this project is funded the way it was intended to be funded, which was through the sale of the three schools. So I know we tried to do the old uh high school slash Brennan. Uh, we did a facade uh uh restriction. Perhaps it's time to look at that and re reconsider the restrictions that we put in place in order to sell that building, which was part of the plan. Or all of you find a different way to fund the the gap uh that this, the lack of the sale of that school uh is gonna do to the funding of the, for the new school. So um, just keep that on the radar. Um, and and uh, you know, figure out how to get that back on on track. I know Finberg's still in use and and uh and there's other stuff that needs to happen, but keeping that on track is important to fund the new school. Thanks.
Nope, totally agree, President Cooper. I think that's a great add-on and good call on. Any other questions, thoughts, concerns on this, folks? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes three to nothing. I'd like to call for a adjournment at seven fifteen.
Second.
All those in favor? Alright, we're adjourned at seven fifteen. Thank you, committee.
Thank you. I'd like to call the zoning land use committee to order at seven.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We got, we got guests waiting.
Okay.
The council meeting was supposed to start at seven. It's seven fif- seven fourteen. Um, you can have your, uh, if you have things to, i- is there anything in here that's urgent that has to come out tonight?
It it was just a Nichols uh street acceptance for Nichols Way. It
That can wait.
Got it, done.
Thank you.
Zoning land use is canceled for tonight.
Thank you. Well, you could have it after the the regular meeting if you wanna get it done and you could just wait till next week.
We could wait.
Thanks. I'd like to call this meeting of the municipal council to order at seven fourteen. Uh, Mr. Withers, would you kindly uh, take a roll call attendance?
Yes, Mr. Blair.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. D. Simone.
Here.
Mr. Conti.
Present.
Mr. Waterman.
Present.
Vice President Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Lucio.
Here.
Mr. Cobus.
Here.
Ms. Dolan.
Here.
Ms. Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Holmes.
Present.
President Cooper.
Here.
All councils are present.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, I entertain a motion to suspend the rolls. Thank you. We're going to take things slightly out of order this evening, but we are gonna start with the uh public hearing and oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. We do have to vote the uh suspending.
Suspended, yep.
Uh, and that vote will begin with Councilor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. Lucio.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. D. Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Uh, President Cooper. President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes. We are operating under suspended rules. Mr. Withers, would you kindly read the notice of the first public hearing this evening?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
Yes, this is a public hearing to discuss the request to accept the layout of Blue Pride Way.
Perfect. Thank you. And I see uh Principal Rooney and Attorney Jacoby. So um I will start uh with the two of you. If you wanna um, just give the council the background, that'll be great.
Good evening, everyone. Um, first of all, thank you for um allowing us to be here. Um, and I I realize that uh some of you will be ending your terms on council and I just wanna take the opportunity, you know, on behalf of the high school to thank you for your service. Um, the uh the transition to the new high school um has been just uh such a um such a breath of fresh air for the for the students and the staff. And um you've been a large part of that, so I I wanna thank you for that. Um, when we uh started the construction of the new building, um, one of the things that um kinda crossed my mind is that, you know, um, Blue Pride has existed at Attleboro High School for a long time. Um, but what I've noticed as a sixteen-year resident of the city, um and a ten-year employee of the district and of the city, um, is that um that that Blue Pride now tends to permeate throughout the city. And I think the fact that um this high school project is the largest um physical and fiscal project in the city's history. Um, it's just a tremendous testament to uh the city's commitment to education, uh to the next generation of our young people. And um I felt that um the previous iterations of Attleboro High School have all existed on their um separate and distinct um postal address, if you will, um that um that maybe that, you know, we could uh rally some support to have out of where the new Attleboro High School exists um at its own separate and distinct address. And and I couldn't think of a better way uh to locate it than at uh number one uh Blue Pride Way. And um, you know, we have an unofficial driveway at the high school um currently that's called Blue Pride Way. Um, and um, you know, I I worked with uh then Mayor Dumas at the time uh to be able to um get some signage for that because um we feel that we try to do things uh at the high school, the Blue Pride Way as often as possible. We're we're certainly not perfect, um but we do strive for it. And um our staff works extremely hard. And um our students are very proud of of their experience. And uh so we would just appreciate your consideration of that request.
Great, thank you. Uh, any questions for uh Mr. Rooney? Right, um Attorney Jacoby, do you wanna add to his comments?
Uh, so the the question then was how do we turn Bill's vision into legal reality? And so the legal reality is that in order to create the address, we needed to be on the school to be on a public way. And we're not gonna rename Rathman Willer Drive or Rome Boulevard. Uh, that that would cause further dislocation for the other people who live on that street who would have a change of address. So we determined the best way to do it was to lay out the semicircular driveway in front of the new school as a public way. And it will be Blue Pride Way if you lay it out under chapter eighty-two. And then when the construction is finished next summer, uh we would ask you to accept it as a public way. Uh, that will allow Mike Tyler to assign the address. It will allow it to be in nine-one-one and in your app on your phone so that you can find the school uh if you're visiting. And so then the question was raised, well, um shouldn't the school department still take care of this? Uh, we talked that over with Mike Tyler, with the city solicitor. And so we put together a memorandum of understanding uh that has been signed uh by the school department uh and I believe by the mayor. And that would say that despite the fact that it's a public way, the school department will still maintain it, will still plow it, uh and will still be responsible if anyone is injured under their insurance. So uh, we have put all of those things in place. And we would like your consideration in laying this out as a public way so that we can uh give uh give this a reality and make this an an actual real legal address.
Great. Any questions for um either uh Vice President Jackson?
Thank you very much. Hi, Jack. How you doing?
Doing great. By the way, councilors, just to remind you, next Wednesday at three o'clock is the next tour of the uh high school under construction. So uh if you haven't signed up, please be in touch with Jeremy cuz we'd love to have you on the tour if you're available.
I had no idea, but yes, I am available. I'm gonna be there and I love seeing the changes over there. And thank you for answering those questions because I was wondering about that, like, if the city was responsible. And so knowing that this school is totally responsible for for that roadway, I am very happy with that. I will support this.
Thank you. Do any other questions or comments? Alright, uh, Council Cobus.
Do you want me to just, I could share what the the picture looks like if uh if there's value in that? Okay.
Yep, just so um the public can see it as well.
There it is.
There it is.
Um, as you can see that.
I I I think this is great. I think this is a way to um recognize all the um you know, all the blue pride that exists within the building uh and within that property. Um, and extends over to the nearby middle school and elementary school and and really um throughout the throughout the school system. But I think that um having uh Blue Pride Way be right in front of the new flagship school uh is great. And um, I don't have any additional questions for either of you. Does any of the anybody else on the council have any additional questions? Is there anyone on the um Zoom? Jim?
None that have expressed interest.
Great. Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Anyone here to speak neither for nor against? Council Cobus, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open?
I do not.
Great, thank you. We'll, that public hearing is closed. Um, again, Jack and and uh Bill, thanks for coming. Uh, thanks for all you do and we'll see you soon. Thank you. We are going to move on to the mayor's communicate. Yeah, the mayor's communication, I'm sorry.
Alright, December seventh, twenty twenty-one, dear municipal councilors. I respectfully submit for confirmation by your honorable body that following reappointments for the positions and for the terms as indicated. I lean and Ron Straminski for the Council on Southern Abuse Prevention. They're both three-year terms. They both expire February twenty twenty-four.
Personnel, Veterans and Human Services Committee, please.
For your information, I regret to inform your body, we have received the resignation of Paul Denacy from the Planning Board effective December twenty twenty-one. Please join me in thanking Mr. Denacy for his service to the city. I respectfully submit for confirmation by your honorable body, the appointment of Bill Beardwood, thirty-one Leewood Lane, to fill an unexpired term of the Planning Board, board, term to expire February twenty twenty-five, copies in your packets.
Personnel, Veterans and Human Services Committee, please.
Yep, uh pursuant to nine forty CMR twenty-nine point zero three sub two B one. Adoption of notice posting requirements. The mayor as chief executive officer as defined in Master General Law, Chapter Four, Section Seven may authorize to adopt the municipal website as the official method of posting notice. Therefore, I hereby authorize the adoption of the local option nine forty CMR twenty-nine point zero three two B one, copies in your packets.
ordinances, elections, and legislative matters committee, please.
Alright. I respectfully submit a communication with Director of Veteran Services Ben Quell regarding donation of three hundred dollars in Stop and Shop gift cards from the American Legion Auxiliary three twelve. The generous donations are terrific assets to the veterans of the s- of Attleboro. In accordance with section one dash two of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body to accept these generous donations to the city of Attleboro, copies in your packets.
Personnel, Veterans and Human Services Committee, please.
Yeah, I respectfully submit a communication with Director of Veteran Services Ben Quell regarding the donation of two hundred dollars to Stop and Shop gift cards from an anonymous donor. Their generous donation is a terrific asset to the veterans of Attleboro. In accordance with section one dash twelve of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body to accept these generous donations to the city of Attleboro, copies in your packets.
Personnel, Veterans and Human Services Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Chief of Police Kyle P. Higney regarding the need for funds to cover the cost of filling eleven vacancies due to retirements, promotion, resignations, and lateral transfer. The funding will be needed to train and outfit new police recruits. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer sixty-eight thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-two cents from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to the following.
You can waive the reading of those accounts.
Okay. Upon approval, the available balance reserve fund for transfer to include any pending request will be two hundred eleven thousand eight hundred six dollars and eighteen cents. Copies in your packets.
Public Safety and Emergency Management, please.
I respectfully submit a communication uh superintendent of Public Works, Michael Tyler, regarding the need for funds to purchase one truck-mounted bear uh Birmingham slash gravel thrower box attachment. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer ten thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account Public Works Equipment. Upon approval, the available balance reserve fund for transfer to include any pending request will be two hundred one thousand one hundred eleven dollars and eighteen cents, copies in your packets.
Public Works Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication with Director of Council on Aging, Melissa Tucker, regarding the need for funds to replace the master fire alarm box and associated electronics alarm and radio system at the senior center. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer seven thousand dollars from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to Council on Aging Building Maintenance. Upon approval, the available balance reserve reserve fund for transfer to include any pending request will be one hundred ninety-four thousand one hundred eleven dollars and eighteen cents, copies in your packets.
Capital improvements to city development, please.
I respectfully submit a communication with Director of Budget and Administration regarding to need to pay a previous year bill totaling eight hundred eighty dollars to the city of Attleboro Police Department. A vote authorizing payment is needed to satisfy this debt. There's no transfer of funds needed to pay these bills as there is sufficient funding in Fund three, 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 five, copies in your packets.
Budget Appropriations Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Attleboro Public Schools Director of Finance, Mark Fertato, regarding the following fiscal year twenty-one fiscal obligations that we're not receiving time to be processed in normal fiscal year business cycle.
You can waive the, I'll waive the reading of those.
Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to authorize the school department to pay these generous these previous year school bills totaling five thousand five hundred forty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents, as identified in Mr. Fertato's as identified in Mr. Fertato's communication, copies in your packets.
Budget Appropriations Committee, please. Steve, just pause right there one second. Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen and seventeen are all public works. They're all related to field replace, field upgrades and and lighting. And I don't think there's any need for us to read them now into the communication. And I have full confidence that Dennis and Kate will have a lively conversation about all of these repairs and or updates and upgrades to the fields and any related infrastructure. So again, items twelve through item seventeen for the Public Works Committee.
All right. Thank you, Mr.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. I respectfully submit a communication with Director of Veteran Services Ben Quell regarding the donation of six hundred dollars in food gift cards from the Holiday Spirit Committee. In accordance with section one dash twelve of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body to accept these generous donations to the City of Attleboro, copies in your packets.
Personnel, Veterans and Human Services Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication with Health Department Outreach Worker slash Case Manager Tisha Silva regarding the donation of eight hundred and twenty-five dollars in food gift cards from the Holiday Spirit Committee. These cards will be offered by the Health Department's Outreach Worker to individuals and families in the in accordance with section one dash twelve of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro. I hereby request your honorable body to accept these generous donations to the City of Attleboro, copies in your packets.
City Property and Claims Committee, please.
Yep, I respectfully submit a communication with Legal Secretary Allison Wood regarding a copy machine that the assessors office would like to declare surplus. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to declare the following as surplus and available for disposition, copies in your packets. It's a copy machine, a Canon IR twenty-eight hundred zero numbers MPJ two zero one six three, it's in very poor condition.
City Property and Claims Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Director of Council on Aging Melissa Tucker regarding the donation of six hundred dollars in food gift cards from the Holiday Spirit Committee. In accordance with section one dash twelve of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body to accept these generous donations to the City of Attleboro, copies in your packets.
City Property and Claims Committee, please.
Yep, all right. I respectfully submit a communication with City Treasurer Lord Gigna regarding the need for funds to pay attorney fees for the remainder of fiscal year twenty-one. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer forty-five thousand dollars from account Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account Treasury or Professional Services. Upon approval, the available balance reserve fund for transfer to include any pending request will be one hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred eleven dollars and eighteen cents, copies in your packets.
Budget and Appropriations Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication with Director of Budget Administration Jeremy Stoll, requesting a waiver on the building permit fees for the roof replacement at the Fire Department Headquarters in Briggs Corner Station. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to waive the building permit fees for this project, copies in your packets.
Capital group, capital improvements committee, please.
For your information, Chris Frappier has been elected to the school, he is a school committee member. Therefore, we have received his resignation from the Historical Commission. Please join me in thanking Mr. Frappier for his service to the city. I respectfully submit a communication from Fire Chief Scott Teal a chance regarding the need to replenish funds used in order to make an earned time payment to an employee who has retired. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body appropriate thirty-two thousand, one hundred dollars and eighty-nine cents from account Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government to account Fire Salaries and Wagers, copies in your packets.
Public Safety, Emergency Management Committee.
I respectfully submit for your confirmation by your honorable body the appointment of Jessica Lee Jones, seven oh eight Newport Ave, to fill an expired term on the Disability Commission, term to expire February twenty twenty-four, copies in your packets.
Personnel, Veterans and Human Services Committee, please.
And I respectfully submit for confirmation by your honorable body the appointment of Stephen Lemay, thirty-three Pentecostal Way, to fill an expired term as a constable, term to expire February twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, copies in your packets.
Personnel, Veterans and Human Services Committee, please.
Sincerely, Paul Haru, Mayor.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the clerk communications.
Yes, we received the Planning Board certificate of vote dated eleven twenty-two twenty-one unanimously to petition the Municipal Council to hold a joint public hearing to amend chapter seventeen dash nine point zero special permits and chapter seventeen dash fifteen point zero site plan review of the zoning ordinances. Suggested amendments are in your packets.
Thank you. Ordinances, Elections and Legislative Matters Committee, please. Well, changed my mind. Zoning and Land Use Committee and Council Cobus, would you like to have a committee meeting on?
A joint public hearing. Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Council Delicio. A roll call vote will begin with Councilor Blair.
This is for a public hearing, correct?
That is correct.
And the date was what again?
January eighteenth.
What is it?
January eighteen.
January eighteen. Okay, Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Ms. De Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Reynolds, you're muted, Sarah.
Step away.
Run, Sarah. Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, we received a letter from two twenty O'Neil LLC to to advise of a community outreach meeting for a proposed marijuana establishment at two twenty O'Neil Boulevard to be held December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one at the suite clubhouse at six P M. The council received a copy of an inspection department letter regarding seventy-two and sixty-four Pleasant Street regarding unlawful expansion for the special permit granted to Trusted Auto. We received an automatic music.
Hold on one second, Steve. I'm also going to refer that. A copy went to all, but that's going to go to the license committee as well, just. Council Dolan, did you have a question?
I'm not sure if this is properly worded because it says unlawful expansion of the special permit granted to Trusted Auto. It's not for Trusted Auto, it's for Gas Plus. The issue is with Gas Plus, I believe, right? The letter from Bill McDonough that's attached here.
I believe that's right. Yeah.
Let's just take a quick look.
Hey, I don't have that with me.
Oh, it's him. Excuse me, my apologies. It's it's Bill responding to the lawyers claiming unlawful expansion.
That's what it was. Yeah, it was. Yes, he was responding to the lawyer.
My apologies.
Okay, no worries. Thank you.
All right, we got an automatic music device license application received from American Legion Post three twelve on Newport Avenue for one pool table and one jukebox.
License Committee, please.
We received an autobeat, an automatic amusement device license application from J. J. R.'s Byron Grill at one forty-seven Pine Street for one pool table and one jukebox.
License Committee, please.
We received two class two license applications from the following. R and D auto sales at one sixteen Dickens Street with five customer and eight display spaces and Seagull Gas Repair D B A one twenty-three mobile at three hundred County Street with four customer and nine disposal spaces.
License Committee, please.
And that's it.
Thank you. Hold on. Okay. And we're going to move to committee reports and we're actually going to start with Council Holmes. Council Holmes.
Thank you, President Cooper. From the docket of November second, twenty twenty-one, I move to approve the decennial repredistricting as presented by the Board of Election Commissioners for twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any additional comments?
I do. Thank you. So as you recall, there was that area between three A and three B that needed to be clarified. What happened was is that every, obviously every ten years with the census report, usually the municipalities create the districts first and then the legislative body then does theirs. This this year, it was a little bit different. The legislative body moved forward quickly with their mapping, which then caused the municipalities to try to catch up and kind of created a nightmare. It's just kind of funny because we're the only state in the whole country that doesn't even have our, our, you know, our capital, it's not even open right now for them to work, but they were very quick to get their mapping done. So I don't know what that really tells us, but basically we've we've resolved the problem. So there's this area is not going to be impacted. And I think that that's a good thing. So I'm really, I appreciate the Board of Election Commissioners coming forward with this. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Council Cobus?
And so so this would have been bad for Ward Three in general, and I just want to applaud Council Holmes for for pushing back on this and getting it sort of straightened out. So thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing none, a roll call vote will begin with Council Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson. Vice President Jackson. You're muted.
Yes. Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. De Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of March sixth, sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, I move to approve the following amendments to section eighteen dash one point eight of the local wetlands protection ordinance. One, to amend section eighteen dash one point eight permits and conditions of the local wetlands protection ordinance by deleting lands within twenty-five feet of resources area and twenty-five foot of continuous undisturbed wetlands protection zone and inserting in place thereof within land within fifty feet of the resource areas and fifty-foot wide continuous and undisturbed wetlands protection zone as follows.
Second.
Who was the second?
I believe it was, I believe it was me, Steve.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Just just to be clear, Council Holmes, you're going through one at a time, the four, the four pieces for for each of the four items within this ordinance. I just want to be clear.
I I am, I was just going to read it as I did in committee as one.
Okay, so this is on, this is on numbers one, two, three, four. And that's it. Okay, so this four, this four revisions within this one motion, just so that everybody's clear on what you're voting on. Any questions or comments, Councilor Holmes?
Thank you. I appreciate, this has been coming up on almost a year now. I really do appreciate the efforts here, but I will not be supporting this. At this time, I just don't think that this is the right time to do something like this. That concludes my comments.
Any additional questions or comments, Council De Simone?
Yes, before I make substantive comments, I I I think the draft in front of us doesn't accurately reflect what was passed from committee.
I don't either.
Because we amended relevant to the exemptions, we made an amendment that I was hoping to undo this evening. And I'm referring specifically President Cooper to eighteen dash one point eight point one A and D. Just for the record, we voted on the version that was sent from the Conservation Commission, which made some changes to the amendment that I proposed. And I respectfully, the chair will correct me if I'm wrong, but we voted on the Conservation Commission's version of that amendment. And in committee, the language that they suggested on in items A and D. If you follow me, it says in further provided any work within twenty-five feet. We changed that to fifty, which I think was in an error because what we've effectively done there is negated the exemption. Because the point of these exemptions, based upon the the testimony we received, the comments we received, the point of these exemptions was to free residents up to do more things in the W P C and to give them appeal rights to the Department of Environmental Protection. Conservation Commission was okay with that, but they wanted to protect the twenty-five feet that they currently have and retain jurisdiction and the appeal set up for those provisions of A and D. So I think it's a disservice to the residents to to extend that area to fifty feet, keep it all under Concom, which defeats the purpose, purpose of the exemption. I hope that making, that's making sense, President Cooper.
So just so that I'm, so that I'm clear, this is a
A and D.
Item number four of the amendments.
Yes, sir. Yep.
At the top of the page, A, additions to existing single-family dwellings.
Yep, yep.
Any work within this document before us says twenty-five feet. Are you suggesting at the meeting that you made a change to fifty feet?
Yes, and and I was going to move to change it back today, but I just want to be accurate that. And if one of the committee members wants to back me up here, but yes, we had amended it to fifty in committee. And I was prepared to move it back to twenty-five this evening, so.
And so just so unclear, A and B are both were amended in committee to fifty.
Yep.
I understand. Are you now making an amendment to change that back to twenty-five?
Yes, for the reasons, for the reasons I stated.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Need a twenty-five. Second, Rick Conti. Any additional questions or comments, Councilor Blair? This is on the amendment. This is on the amendment from fifty to twenty-five feet.
Let me get it straight. I'm a little confused, Mark. The the motion is coming down to change it from twenty-five to fifty, right? Now, Kathleen, you're not changing it, your original motion back to twenty-five feet.
President Cooper, may I?
Yeah, go ahead, Council.
And I I apologize to all for the confusion. Council Blair, I'm when we voted in the committee, we were voting on the conservation version of my amendment. And they had carved out, they wanted to preserve the jurisdiction they currently have of twenty-five feet for the activities listed under A and D of the exemptions. In committee, Pete, Council Blair, we moved that to fifty. And what we did by doing that was get, was give Conservation Commission jurisdiction over the whole fifty and thus appeal rights to the Superior Court, which is, which is not what I intended, which was not what I intended. So my voting on it was was an error. And I wanted to just be clear and accurate for the record that that's a disservice to the residents, in my opinion. So I was going to move it back, I'm asking to move it back to what Concom proposed, which is that they retain for for activities under A and D. They retain the jurisdiction which they currently have of twenty-five feet. And that, and therefore they they have that jurisdiction, therefore the appeal rights remain the same. But for the other, were it to be extended an additional twenty-five feet, their appeal rights, residents' appeal rights would be to the Department of Environmental Protection. And they don't necessarily have to be subject to filing an application. Does that, does that make sense, Council Blair?
Yeah, this is just retaining the twenty-five foot like they have now, correct?
Exactly, sir. Yes, and my apologies.
Don't fix it. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments on the amendment, Councilor Cobus?
So in general, I'm not super supportive of this overall. But I I am supportive of the amendment to A and D because without it, I'm supportive of the amendment because without it, A and D don't make any sense. So the amendments make sense, but the overall thing I'm not supportive of.
Thank you. Number one, I've never been in support of the seventy-five foot buffer. Perfectly clear to all of you right now and here and then. Now, we're making all these amendments after the public hearings and now and now we're not going to have another public hearing. We don't have other, people to come and say, hey, that's a really good idea. Hey, that's a really good idea. Hey, that's not a good idea. That's a good idea. We're not getting that now. I say, we kill this right now and let's start all over with all the amendments that you have already proposed. And De Simone, you have worked tires, tirelessly on this. Like, I, like, I am so impressed with what you've done with all of this. I really am. Like, you've worked super, super duper hard. And yeah, and I'm impressed with what you've come up with. I'm still not voting for it, just so I'm saying. But you've worked really, really hard and I'm very impressed with that and thank you ever so kindly for doing that. But right now, there's so many changes. All the people have come before us. The public hearing, that it's not fair. And now you're going to have a whole new council. Really, really look at this next time. Like, right now, I'm, I'm just not supporting any of it. I'm just, want to put that out there right now. Very impressed with what you've done, but yeah.
Thank you, Vice President Jackson. Council Dolan and then Holmes and then Blair.
The amendments are, thank you, President Cooper. The amendments are a result of the public hearings. That, that, you know, to start all the, we started with the 75 feet, we had it come down as it came down. I mean, right now, this vote is just to put it back, to just fix this. And I think before we get too far off the rails, we should just vote on this one to put it back to where we started because that was just a small error. But these amendments are a result of listening to the constituents, to listening to all the residents. Their concessions on both sides of, you know, it, the way it came down. So we made concessions to address concerns of people that spoke before us. So we did exactly what we're supposed to do. We made changes based on what the residents wanted, didn't want, and, and so on and so forth. So that's the result. That's the result of listening to people and listening to what they want. And I agree that Council De Simone did tremendous work on it, very detailed. I think the revisions are excellent. And again, starting all over would be, I mean, this is the result of the public hearings and the letters and the petitions and everything that we listened to. So I do support this and I will support this. And, you know, we'll, we'll probably speak further. But anyway, I, I just think that we should probably just vote on this one before we go off the rails like I just did. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Holmes?
Thank you. You know, when Vice President Jackson was just speaking, it was reminding me of something. I had spoken to Gary about this and I, I did tell him some of the things that we had spoken about in terms of having a strategic plan for the city, an environmental kind of plan. And it was interesting, he said, you know, sometimes you guys are asking for that and then we create that and you say, no, break it down, it's too big. And so I, I understand that push and pull, like, what's the right balance of addressing these things? But the, but the challenge is, is that I was just shocked by how many residents came out not in favor of this during a pandemic. Like, I, I was just blown away by how many people are concerned that their property is going to be impacted by this. And so I don't think, and again, the hoops that individuals are going to have to jump through in terms of the permitting process, the, the paperwork, the, I was, they were speaking to us and I don't think it's okay to just ignore their concerns regarding this and their fears, really. Their fears of that, that the city is kind of saying what can or cannot happen on their property. So again, I don't know what the right answer is, but when I said to Gary, you know, maybe we need to have a strategic plan that's bigger. He kind of said, well, then we do that and you guys say, no, break it down. And so it's like, what's the balance here? But this is not a good place to start, I feel like. So that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm going to answer that a little bit, but try to anyway. Yes, you have the strategy, but you can't eat the elephant all at once. So as long as you're doing and making incremental improvements toward your strategy, then I think, you know, I think all of you would be supportive of that if you adopted a strategy, if that was the way that it was decided to, to go forward. Councilor Blair?
I, I tend to disagree with Ms. Dolan and I agree with
So I just want to keep us on track with, with
Oh.
Right?
I, I can't support it from, I didn't support it from the start and I won't support it now. I think we ought to vote on it, my opinion, my opinion only. We voted down as presented and if they want to come back in the spring or after the new council sits, then we're going to have to go through it all over again. But to pack it up now, I, I don't think it's the right time. I personally won't vote for it at all, no matter how it comes down. If it changes anything, I'm not voting for it.
Thank you. Any additional comments on the amendment?
President Cooper, on the amendment to return it back to the language that it came out of, right?
Yes, that is correct.
I have no comments on that. I do have comments otherwise, but.
Yes.
Thank you.
So again, this is, this vote is a roll call vote. It will begin with Council Blair and this is a vote to amend the 50-foot in item A and D back to 25 feet. Any additional questions or comments? Does everybody know what you're voting for?
Yes.
Thank you. The roll call will begin with Council Blair.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Ms. De Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
No.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Ten yeas, one nay.
Thank you. Amendment, amendment passes. Any additional questions or comments on the motion as amended, Councilor De Simone?
Thank you, President Cooper. First of all, thank you all for, for allowing me to correct that error. So I have supported this from the beginning. I support it at 75. However, after hearing from many residents, I, I, and so many on both sides, I thought it deemed it worthy to reconsider and to try to meet in the middle, which I think is our job because we serve all. I think this is an important issue to the city. It was important 20 years ago when this body hashed it out and wound up at 25. Here we are 20 years later, just trying to get to 50. This is important to our, for me, the primary reasons are the water supply, water resource protection, water quality. I won't belabor those points because I don't think many minds are going to be changed this evening. You speak about a master plan. If you've read the comprehensive plan and the municipal vulnerability assessment, you'll see that this issue has been mentioned. It's been considered, it's been on the radar, this is not new, it did not fall from the sky. I think by not voting on this today, not even considering, because what I'm hearing is some, some folks aren't even open to considering meeting in the middle, is a disservice to the residents on both sides. And I don't think that we've come this far just to start all over again with perhaps a bigger project. That doesn't make sense to me. I think this is a wonderful opportunity to start the conversation and I fully appreciate President Cooper's comments a few weeks ago about the comprehensive approach. I'm, I'm all in. Let's go, but let's start here. Let's start now. After four public hearings and many, many people who expressed their opinions on either side, that's where I want to start. This is I want, where I think we should begin. And I respectfully ask that let go of your preconceptions, keep your minds open. I hope you heard both sides and not just the one that affirmed where you already were. Because that's not what we're here to do. Thank you, President Cooper.
I'm muted. That was Vice President Jackson, then Council Waterman and then Dolan and then Conti and then Cobus.
Thank you, President Cooper. So my mind has been opened. But I also realized that originally, when this came down, it came down from the mayor's office and it came from the mayor himself and he made a recommendation for a 75-foot buffer. And we all listened to it and then there was a lot of complaint and he realized he stepped on his foot and he's brought it back up to his office and that's where it went. Then, to me, he got together his department heads and put them all together and they chatted and he got their opinions and he asked them for their opinions and asked them to put it all together, like, how they can word how this is all going to work out okay. And I get that. That's how it's supposed to play out. The mayor is a mayor and the mayor tells his department heads what to do and they do what they, they're supposed to do and they answered him. And I get it and they did a great job. They presented to us, well-presented. But we never actually got a complaint from the water department to say, you know what, our water is in danger. We never got that. We never got from the conservation, we're having a problem with this 25-foot buffer. We never heard that. That never came to us before with the mayor presented for a 75-foot buffer. So I'm having a problem with that, a big problem with that. Like, it was never a problem. So I can't support this because it, that's not where it came from. It came from the mayor and the mayor's office and I understand, like, he, he wants to do this. And I get it. I get the whole world wants to conserve and take this, but it didn't come from conservation. Who really knows what's going on? It did not come from our water department to say, oh, we're having a problem with our water and our water is in danger. That never happened. So I, I am not supporting this. I am not supporting this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Waterman?
Thank you, President Cooper.
Welcome.
This is, this is not as simple as it looks, not even close as simple as it looks. Right now, we, this, we have said we're not going the 75 route. I totally agree with that. I think that was way too big a jump. But it's not simply 50 or 25 feet either. There are many exemptions that were originally proposed through our planning department and there are many more exemptions which the the ordinance committee has approved. And I, I would appreciate it if I could ask Councilor De Simone another question. Is that okay? Pursue. Councilor De Simone, would you be willing to share with us at least some of the key exemptions that you believe the ordinance committee has also approved that you had suggested? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, thank you, Council Waterman. Yeah, so having heard the residents and particularly the, the homeowners who had plans for their property, I expanded the exemptions that were originally proposed, took a lot of what was, would have originally required a permit and appeal to the Superior Court, moved it into objection, objection, object, excuse me, exemptions. But anyway, I won't belabor the point. I would say that the couple of the most important things that are now exempt activities, therefore, you don't necessarily need the local wetlands permit and you don't have appeal, you have appeal rights to the Department of Environmental Protection, which several people said is important as a way to save time and money. Most importantly, I would point out, additions to single-family homes. If done, you know, in the, in the, in the zone, you don't need a permit for that and your appeal rights are to the Department of Environmental Protection. I think also equally important is converting existing disturbed area, which includes lawn, folks. You can convert your lawn in the wetlands protection area to decks, patios, sheds, pools, et cetera, and still have appeal rights to the Superior Court. So I tried to think about things that people more than likely might plan for doing down the road and put them under exemptions and gave them appeal rights to the Department of Environmental Protection, which saves them time and money. And those are two of the bigger things, I think, that seem, from what I heard, to be on people's radar and in their consideration. I think, I think those are significant compromise. I think it's a great compromise, in my opinion. So those are the two most important, Council Waterman, to me, the additions and converting lawns to several other uses in the wetland protection zone.
Thank you. And if I may, my understanding also is that you shared all these exemptions before the vote of your committee with the planning department and they supported the exemptions that you were suggesting, correct?
President Cooper, if I may, and I, I don't want to speak for the chair, but Diane, a chair, please correct me if I'm wrong. Both the city planning and the conservation agent, the city planner, the conservation agent and the conservation committee reviewed all these based upon the reply that we got. And they made revisions to them, which is now before us. It is my understanding that they are supportive of the changes, but I do not wish to speak for them or misspeak in any way. But that is my understanding, Council Waterman.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Councilor Dolan?
Thank you. So just a, just a, a couple of things. You know, we're, we're wrapping up things all the time. I mean, we, we have, you know, a, a ton of stuff that's coming down with budget and everything. And I don't understand, there, there would be no, it doesn't make any sense to me. I just respectfully disagree with Council Blair about waiting for the next council. We've worked on this, we've talked about it. We've had all the public hearings on it, on this council. So it's only right that this council vote on it. And to Council Holmes' concern about ignoring anybody's concerns, I completely agree with that. But I don't think we should ignore people's concerns on the other side that are, that were in favor for this. So I don't, I don't believe we should be ignoring any residents' concerns. And I think that's why we tried to come up with this compromise of 50 feet and then the additional exemptions. And, and you know, it, it, it may not have, I mean, it, it's not the water department that typically would bring new business before us and, and it did come down from the mayor, but it doesn't change the fact that, you know, we went to the 25 feet o, over 20 years ago and it's not sustainable now. With all the new information we have as far as air quality, water quality, everything that we need to do and that everybody's aware of, that's what, what's happening right now, the 25 feet isn't sustainable in protecting our environment. So when you have new information, when you know better, you do better. And I think that we would be doing a disservice of any inaction by this council. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just want this opportunity to explain to taxpayers why I'm going to support this, even though I believe it's going to fail. This council, I'm very proud of this council, the way it handled this, this measure. When I asked for a a little continuance back about two or three months ago, I know it upset a few people, but I felt that this is probably the most misunderstood piece of litigation that we've had in the last five to 10 years. That, there's been, maybe it's because of the pandemic, maybe it's because of the way we've changed our communications. There, there's just so much misinformation. And when it first came out, I thought, well, you know, the states at 100 feet and mayor wants to go to 75, I, I get that. When the compromise came out at 50, I felt that was good work. And, and the amendment that we've just passed is, is, is positive. When we were elected as councilors, this is one of those measures that I think we probably weren't thinking of. Otherwise, we might not have run for city council because this took up a lot of energy, a lot of time, a lot of discussion. But, but over, but in the end, for me, it's beyond reasonable doubt. You're sitting on the fence, you're 50/50, where are you going to go with this? I agree with my next door neighbor and in this case in Attleboe, it's, it's almost too late to try something like this. But I've read the studies from Washington and I've decided to support this measure because I, I think it's the right thing to do for the future of Attleboe and that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Council Cobus and then Council Blair.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you. I'd like to take a quick minute and explain to, to all the, the, the councilors what exactly we're asking of residents in case folks aren't familiar with the, the process of asking for an exemption here. And so over the last couple of months, I've just gone through the process for a different situation, looking to put a, a small addition, just build a small attached garage on my house. And I happen to be within two hundred feet of the Ten Mile River and have had to file a notice of intent for, i- i- it's a state thing. But the paperwork and process I've gone through for this is exactly the same process that the city would require. If someone who wanted an exa- wanted an exemption for the fifty feet that, that we're proposing here. And just to walk you through what that process looked like. It was back on September twenty-ninth that I had requested a building permit and that was rejected because I was informed, it was a form that I needed to file a notice of intent with the, with the state. Contacted the conservation agent and who, who was incredibly helpful in sort of, in babysitting me and holding my hand through, through the whole process. But the first email I received from him was a thirty-two page document with instructions on how to file this notice of intent. Thirty-two pages of instructions in. So my first thought was to, to try to hire somebody to, to sort of file the paperwork and, and hire an engineer to go through this process. It would have cost roughly two thousand dollars for me to hire an engineer to go through this. Would have required an engineer and a botanist and all these other things. And I could have done that, but in talking to the conservation agent, like I said, the, super helpful for me. He encouraged to, he, he offered to, to help me and in talking to him, he, I was like, I, I don't want preferential treatment as a city council or anything. And he explained, he's like, no, no, I, I work with anybody that's going through the process and and so I worked with them. He came out, came to my house. There was one, one site visit. I, over the, the entire process, I had to go at the city hall four or five times, numerous phone calls. I have a folder, it definitely killed some trees in trying to work with, with this process. I needed to provide eleven copies of a thirty-page report in paper as part of filing it. It took roughly forty hours to sort of produce all the documentation that was needed. In, even with the, you know, the nine-page form required by the state, a lot of the questions are a, a simple checkbox. So it's, oh, this should be easy. But the question is, is any portion of the proposed activity eligible to be treated as a limited project subject to three-ten CMR ten dot twenty-four or three-ten CMR ten dot fifty-three? So every one of those then requires additional research and investigation. It, it it was an incredibly time-consuming process, but eventually got through all that paperwork. Went through a number of iterations where I sent it into the conservation agent. He reviewed it. It was like, oh, you screwed this up, screwed that up. It, it like a, a ton of back and forth. Then required me to physically mail a copy to Mass DEP as well as mail checks to a separate PO box in Boston because they couldn't go to the same place. You couldn't pay for it online. And then, but because Mass DEP is working from home, also needed to email a copy to their, their email address. And I had to go through the city to get a, a copy of, a registered copy of all the abutters. I had to go to the post, generate a letter to send to all the abutters, send all of that registered mail through the post office. Record all those receipts in or, and then scheduled a public hearing with the Conservation Commission. Had to pay for that to be advertised in the Sun Chronicle, which also required sort of driving over to the Sun Chronicle. They're like, oh, it's gonna, it'll be in the Sun Chronicle on Tuesday. You need to be here on Monday between these hours only in order to, to sort of submit payment for that. And then finally, on November seventeenth, we had the public hearing in front of the Conservation Commission where I showed up and they all had the eleven copies of, of all this paperwork that I provided to them. You know, presented my case, explained the situation. I, I, in, I applaud the work that the Conservation Commission is doing. But the process is so archaic, but eventually that was approved. And then af- after Thanksgiving, you know, it was like, contacted the conservation agents, say, hey, how's the building permit going? He's like, oh, I just generated the, the, the conditions for, for the work. You need to now take that document and record it with the Registry of Deeds. So I, I went and grabbed that, went to the Registry of Deeds, recorded that, paid another hundred dollars or, or whatever the cost was. And so it now, I think today, more over, well over two months after we were ready to start construction. I, I think we're ready to start. But it's, it, it's going to start getting cold soon and, and I don't, I don't know. But, uh, but the bottom line is it took well over forty hours of work. I'm not sure exactly what the overall cost to me was. It seemed like every other bit, it was a hundred dollars here, two hundred dollars there. But the thing I want to mention is that the process was incredibly archaic. It, it, it troubles. So in, in the thing I, I, I kept thinking about, I was like, well, is this by, does, does this mean the, like, is it intentionally obfuscated like this to sort of prevent people from, from trying to do, do work here in? I don't like that answer. And, and I, if, if, if somebody can file for an exemption, it should be a straightforward process. And in my mind, this, I'm not willing to, I'm not interested in hearing this come back to the council before we fix our internal processes within the city and streamline those processes. This is, like, I'm not going to support this. Never mind. So we have one set of rules for, from zero to twenty-five feet and now another set of rules from twenty-five to fifty feet. Like, i- i- it's just convoluting the process somewhat even more. Like, so a- as a result of that and as a result of going through this process myself, there, there's no way I can, I can support this at all. So, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Council Blair.
I never said that I didn't want to vote on this. I said I would not support anything. And worse comes to worse if they want to bring it back in next year. Then you bring it back in and you start the process all over again. I never said that I don't want to vote on it. I want to vote on it now and vote it down. You don't need to fix something that's not broke. Thank you.
Council Delicio.
Thank you. Interesting conversations all around. I think, you know, I reiterate and appreciate all the work that Councilor De Simone put in. Anyone who knows Kathleen knows she does her homework and she puts everything she has into it. That being said, my struggle is, one, do we know this is a compromise for those who came out? Because, you know, there's a lot of people who came out at the seventy-five, but they also said, you know, even the fifty, I think it would impact their, their property lines. The other thing is when you have an ordinance and you have all these exemptions and exemptions, exemptions, why have the ordinance? It undermines the integrity to an extent of the ordinance if you, you're working in all these work runs. I appreciate Council Cobus sharing his personal experience. I think that is something to be thought about fixing our internal process before we start adding to what the ordinance is. As far as the open mind piece, you know, I've talked to people on both sides. I've had conversations with people on the other side from where I'm at and I've learned from them. I've thought about it and I've looked at everything that's been in front of us. I think it's now time to load it up, load it down and move on until we can get the right piece of business in front of us.
Let's go.
Any additional questions or comments? So I, I, I do have some and I, I'll keep it brief. I said and I maintain that without a strategy around overall development in the city, I, I don't, I won't support this piecemeal approach. There are other things in my mind that we can do to protect the water supply that we have in place right now today that we do not do. And I'm going to name some of them for you. I'm going to tell you about a catch basin control operation and maintenance plan. It's bogus. We rent up, we rent a truck for twenty-five grand a year that goes around and sucks out a couple of catch basins, a couple hundred of them. And some of that water discharges directly into the wetlands, directly into the wetlands. We say it one more time, untreated water directly into the wetland. We have catch basins in the city of Attleboro with trees five and six inches in, in diameter. They didn't just grow there overnight. And again, some of those discharge when they're full, when we get a hundred-year storm, blah, blah, blah. They, they direct, they discharge directly into the the, into the wetlands. I think a graduated approach is the right one to take from zero to twenty-five. That is truly a no disturb from twenty-five to fifty. If you, if you, if you propose X number of low-impact development strategies, impervious, pervious pavers, pavement like on Judy Riverbank Road with, with, with the water goes into the pavement, but it looks like pavement. Geothermal, so, solar, you do an open space residential subdivision. We have toted open space residential subdivision in this city, but we don't have enough open space residential subdivisions. We have a few. If we really want to preserve open space and protect the, the groundwater and protect the, the, the environment, we should be looking at strategies to, to get developers and property owners to endorse that type of development strategy. So I've said it before, I'll say it again. I don't want to chair it, but I'm happy to participate on it. If there was some type of committee that the mayor were to form, to look at this, to go beyond what's in the environmental resources section of the comprehensive plan. And again, if there's something happening within the hundred feet of the wetland today that the Conservation Commission doesn't like within the development, they have the right to condition it today. Today they can do that. If they don't like it, if something isn't right in the development within the hundred feet, the CONCON can issue conditions. So I, I, I don't understand. I don't understand the urgency to make this change and then to allow exemptions. Either we're gonna protect it. Sometimes, not all the time, half the time, none of the time. I don't know. I, it's, it just doesn't seem like it's, uh, I appreciate all the work, tremendous amount of time, hours. This, this single sheet right here did it for me, from, from Kath, from Councilor De Simone.
I know.
I, I really, this really was a, a single pager that I could wrap my head around. Not having been at the meeting, but gone and reviewed this, this section of the, of the discussion that you all had. So I, I just, I, I think it's time to do something, yes. But I don't think this is the right thing to do at this point without doing some of the maintenance things. Don't, don't build it. You know, we, we do the same thing with sidewalks. I'm going off the rails a bit, but we, we do the same thing. Trees up to my belly button and I'm six foot five coming out of the sidewalks. And it's not on, it's not on the side roads. It's on the main drags where people are walking. We kind of do a better job maintaining what we have overall in the city. And I, I, any of you that want to take a ride with me, I'll show you some catch basins in the city that you your head will blow off. When I show you the three inches of sediment that's in the, that's in the wetland. Because it discharges into the wetland and there's been no maintenance. So I, I, I appreciate all the work. I think it's, it started a, a, a lively discussion if nothing else. And I, and I think something will come of it. But I don't think this is the something that, at this time. Any additional questions or comments? I see none. The roll call, any questions, comments, problems? Everybody knows what they're voting on. The motion as amended with one single amendment.
Did we hear a second?
Second.
Yes, the original second on this was
Rick was second on the amendment, I think.
Rick was second on the amendment and Councilor De Simone was second.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, a roll call vote will begin with Councilor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
No.
Ms. Reynolds.
No.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
No.
Mr. Delicio.
No.
Vice President Jackson.
No.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. De Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
No.
President Cooper.
No.
Four yeas, seven nays.
Thank you, President Cooper. That concludes the business for ordinance election Legislative Matters Committee. I'll call for committee meeting next time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And now we'll go back and to Council Blair.
I'm a little discombobulated here. I'll be right with you. I have a few, quite a few tonight. I'll start from the docket of reporting public safety emergency management. From the docket of December seventh, two, twenty-twenty-one. I moved to accept and approve expending of funds and any future grant amendments related to the fifteen thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars grant received by the fire department to utilize for emergency management. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Thank you.
I'd also like to move to amend the EMP grant from fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars to twenty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. This amount was
Second.
Second, this was further granted to us after the original motion was put in. And when we voted it, we voted any future grant amendments with this added money is.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? This is on the amendment to increase twenty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars seconded by Council Cobus. Seeing none, a roll call vote will begin with Council Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Ms. De Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. The amendment passes. Now on to the motion as amended. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, a roll call will begin with Council Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. De Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of December seventh, twenty-twenty-one. I moved to transfer eight thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents from account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero dash five-seven-eight-three-zero-zero. Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account one-two-two-zero-one-zero-zero-zero dash five-eight-five-zero-eight-zero. Fire security camera for the security camera to be installed at the South Attleboro Fire Station.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments? Thank you, motions in order, any additional comments?
No, we discussed it in committee.
A roll call will begin with Council Blair.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Ms. D Simone?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. I moved, uh, from the docket of December seventh, twenty-twenty-one, I moved to accept approximately eleven thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars from FY twenty-one Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant through the New Bedford Police Department and the U.S. Department of Justice and to approve expending of funds and any future grant amendments by the Atterboro Police Department.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any additional comments?
No, talked about it last week.
A roll call will begin with Council Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. D Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of December seventh, twenty-twenty-one, I moved to appropriate seventy thousand dollars from account one-zero-zero-zero dash three-five-nine-zero-zero-zero. Undesignated fund balance free cash general government to the following. Thirty thousand dollars to account one-two-two-zero-one-zero-zero-zero dash five-two-four-two-three-zero. Fire vehicle maintenance, thirty thousand to account one-two-two-zero-one-zero-zero-zero dash five-two-four-two-six-zero. Fire major vehicle repairs and ten thousand dollars to account one-two-two-zero-one zero-zero-zero dash five-three-one-one-two-zero. Fire employee training.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any additional comments?
No, discussed it in committee last week.
Great, the roll call will begin with Council Blair.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Ms. D Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. From the docket of December seventh, twenty-twenty-one, I moved to approve the following resolution. To move to petition a general court to enact the following legislation providing for the exemption of the city of Atterboro from chapter thirty-one of the general laws as they think as they concern recruitment and hiring a full-time permanent police office. Providing that the legislature may reasonably vary from the form and substance of the requested legislation within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition.
Second.
No, thank you, um, President Cooper, this was read in entirety. Ms. D Simone read it. Do you want me to read that again?
No, we can waive the reading unless someone has a, a
Particular question, I laid it out at the last meeting, if anybody had a question, go through Virginia to me and I gratefully answer that. Um, a couple comments. This isn't asking to do away with civil service completely. This is asking that the hiring process be given back to the city. And we will be skipping the civil service list. And I believe leaving it with the right people to get the job done right and to hire the right employees. Well, you, you've seen a, a, a request coming down from the police department for the tuna sixty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars earlier this evening. Out of this sixty-eight, there's twenty-seven thousand dollars there for two people that were hired because of civil service. One withdrew themselves from the police academy. The second one refused to do the physical assessment part of it. Physical fitness assessment part, it cost us twenty-seven thousand dollars, we got zero for that. These two people most likely would not have been hired in the first place. It's been a long time since we have had control, oh, actual control over the hiring. Number of towns around us have done away with civil service completely. Mansfield, Foxborough, Rantham, North Atterboro, Franklin, Seekonk, Rehoboth, Swansea, Somerset, Lakewood, Lakeville, Framingham, Norwood, Westwood, and Canton. That's in our immediate area. So, we're not, and they did away with it completely. What we're asking for is doing away with the hiring process. Once these people are hired and they deemed competent, they, they will go on civil service at the end of the year. But if they're not
Question, what's the difference?
So, I can't, I've had extensive talks with the chief and I believe my committee, some of the guys have had talks with the chief. And this is the way to go, and our fire chief wants to look at it, so. I will be supporting it, I think it's a way to go, we'll have more control, we'll have a better police department. And we'll be higher, we'll be able to hire locally, not somebody from the other side of Boston just because he's on the list and he's up near the top. So, that's my feelings on it.
Thank you, uh, Council Dolan, Vice President Jackson, and then D Simone.
Thank you, um, I, I look forward to hearing from the chief after this to see if this has really opened things up and made his life easier and, and hiring, uh, police officers. And, um, you know, kudos to, uh, Council D Simone, this is excellently written and, um,
Couldn't have done it without her.
And, uh,
You're right.
Um, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought there, but I look forward to hearing from the chief and I, and I look forward to the benefits from this and, and they're not giving up their benefits of civil service completely, so, um, I, I think this is a good thing, so, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Vice President Jackson.
Thank you, Council Cooper, so, Council Blair, so, what's the difference between not hiring, between um, someone who's civil service and someone who's not? So, what's a benefit and what's not the benefit?
Benefit to the city is they won't have appeal rights to civil service from day one. They won't have appeal rights to civil service till they've served that one year.
So, what's the difference between offer us as far as their credentials? Are they, like, explain that to me, please?
They'll be vetted the same way that they have been vetted, but we won't have to stick to the list. We'll be able to hire more local. We'll be able to hire better quality, I believe. I personally believe, the chief believes you'll be able to hire a better quality. And who's better qualified to say that than Chief Hagney? And at the end of the year, they're gonna go on civil service, if he deems them suitable for the Atterboro Police Department after a year probation, they will go on civil service and they will have the appeal rights to civil service. The people that are on civil service and are on the department already give up nothing.
Uh, Councilor D Simone?
Thank you, President Cooper, I would echo everything that Council Blair said so well and so passionately, Council Blair, thank you for that, it was a pleasure working with you and the chief on this, I think this is, uh, a very innovative, creative way to solve the recruitment and hiring issues that, that the chief has repeatedly mentioned in several communications of late, so I'm excited to see how this goes over at the state level. Um, and it might catch on because there's now, you know, as municipalities struggle with this question, do we get off the civil service, is it, is it a negotiation issue, how do we do this? This might be a path forward, so I'm excited about it, I think it's innovative. Uh, but most importantly, if it attracts qualified, diverse, and committed individuals to the Attleboro Police Department, it'll be well worth it, uh, in the long run, so, and, and I think that's what it will do, because that's what the chief said. It'll have more autonomy over who we hires, and I think that's really important, particularly now, I'm hoping that these offices are local. I think that matters, uh, as well, so, I'm excited and I, I hope you all agree and support this, thank you, President Cooper.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Delicio.
Thank you, um, Council Blair, Council D Simone, well done, well said. Um, I don't wanna belabor the point, but what we have to take into consideration is we need to give the chief as many tools in his toolbox as we can to hire the right police officer. You know, Council D Simone, you mentioned about being local matters, it certainly does, you know, even in the private sector, you look and you have people, you hire people and they're good people, but they're gonna wanna move closer to home. And what this does is it gives an incentive and it gives the chief the ability to be able to hire someone local, someone who's good, someone's gonna make it to the end of the training, and that's what's really important. Um, to then have the option to then go back to the civil service, I think it'll attract a different caliber of candidate. The other thing is policing has changed so much over the last several years that even now, you're seeing it in, in our own city, you know, and kudos to the Atterboro Police for um, the Herculean work they put forth with some of the violent, uh, episodes that have occurred throughout the city, but I think the chief would agree that it's, the struggle right now is very, very real, trying to find the right candidates and trying as Peter said, we're gonna be looking to fill eleven offices. Eleven, that's a lot. And he, we need to be able to give the chief every advantage to find the right people to keep the city safe, and I think this does that.
Not to delay, to, yeah. Delay, but I was going over the list with the chief and some of his background checks. Person applying for police officer job nearby state, right? Under investigation for rape. Second one, multiple counts of domestic abuse. Uh, it, it's, it's unbelievable what's required, what's coming forth through that civil service list. And he's gotta go through that list. Has to. So, I think it's time we support this and it's got, it hurts no one. It doesn't hurt the current officers that are on civil service. In the way this is proposed at the end of the year, these new officers will go on civil service and they'll have the protection of civil service. Thank you.
Thank you, any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, a roll call will begin with Council Blair.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. D Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes, Steve, who do you have a second on that one?
I had Kate, I, I, I have Kate.
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, Peter, sorry.
Yeah, that's no problem, I just check and see if I had any more.
You do.
You do.
I do, yeah, from the docket of December seventh, twenty-twenty-one, I moved to call for a public hearing on January eighteenth for the following. Amendment, section ten dash five, five-point-two-A, the revised ordinance to prohibit parking on Starve Drive, West Lee Side, from North Avenue to Commonwealth Ave. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any additional comments?
Uh, no, we've been working on this, um, and like to get it taken care of, because it, it's really a public safety hazard where they're parking on both sides of Starve Drive. Uh, take a ride through there if you want, you'll see cars parked on either side of the road. Um, kids running across the road to get the class. Uh, if you had to get a fire truck down there, looks pretty tight to me. Never mind two-way traffic, so, this, the way it's written will do away with that, we'll have no parking on the side of the street towards, uh, the highway. Towards ninety-five. And, uh, the kids won't be running across the street, putting themselves in danger. And the public safety emergency vehicles will be able to get through there readily.
Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, a roll call will begin with Council Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. D Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of December seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Excuse me, from the docket of November sixteenth. I didn't think it was funny. From the docket of November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, I moved to appropriate twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and ten cents from account one-zero-zero-zero dash three-five-nine-zero-zero-zero. Undesignated fund balance free cash general government to account one-two-two-zero-one zero-zero-zero dash eight, excuse me, dash five-eight-five-zero-one-zero. Fire new computer equipment for various computer equipment.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any additional comments?
No, we discussed this in committee.
Great, uh, roll call will begin with Council Blair.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Ms. D Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you, I have no other business this evening, but would request a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Great, thank you. Councilor D Simone?
Yes, thank you, President Cooper, I have, uh, three, uh, items this evening, if I may. From the docket of November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, I moved to hold a public hearing on December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one for the following proposed amendment. An amendment regarding section ten dash five-point-two-A of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro to extend the no parking to corner area from twenty-five to one hundred feet on, on the southbound side of Frank Bosberg Drive at Extension Street.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any additional questions or comments?
No, I think it's been well covered, President Cooper.
Thank you. Uh, roll call will begin with Council Blair.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. D Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Oh, uh, yeah, he had to reset his
Okay. Uh, Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you, President Cooper, before I read the next two motions, I have a, a procedural question. I have not read the amendments in their entirety, um, do they need to be read before the public hearing, President Cooper? So, I should read them now, or can I put it off, I don't wish to delay tonight's meeting?
Yeah, no, you do not have to read them to call for the public hearing, this is simply to call for the public hearing, these will be published in the paper. They're available, uh, outside the door of the council office, and then you can, uh, read them in your committee uh, at a time that you feel is appropriate.
Understood, thank you, from the docket of November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, I moved to hold a public hearing on January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two for the following proposed amendments. Uh, amendment to chapter ten dash five-point-one-three, limited for commercial vehicles and trailers. Amendment to chapter 10 dash 5.13, limited for commercial vehicles and trailers.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Again, this is just a call for the public hearing on January 18th. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, a roll call will begin with Council Holmes.
Uh, Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes. Yes.
Looks like Steve froze too.
Oh, is Jay here?
No, Jay is is trying to reset his computer. He's having.
I'm unstable too right now. It's true.
So you stopped at, you stopped at Cobus.
Okay. Uh, Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. D Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, President Cooper. Last up, from the docket of November 16th, 2021. I moved to hold a joint public hearing with the planning board on January 18th, 2022 for the following proposed amendments. An amendment to chapter 17 dash 3.3, prohibitive uses concerning commercial vehicles.
Thank you. Motion. Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments? And this is just to have the public hearing on the 18th of January. All right, a roll call vote will begin with Council Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Ms. D Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, President Cooper. That concludes the business of the Traffic and Transportation Committee for this evening. We look forward to a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Great, thank you. Counselor Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for Capital Improvements and City Development Committee, we have one motion to bring before the council this evening from the docket of December 7th, 2021. I move to approve the expanding of funds at any future grant amendments related to the community planning grant to the city from the DHCD for $75,000.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments?
No, this is routine, happens every year. Lucky that we got everything processed in time and got the, got the money for mud.
Thank you. A roll call will begin with Council Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. D Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Blair. Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper. President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the business of the Capital Improvements and City Development Committee has to bring before the council this evening. We'll look forward to a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Great, thank you. Counselor Waterman.
Thank you. Reporting from the Personnel, Veterans and Human Services Committee and from the docket of November 16th, 2021. I would move to approve the appointment of Shane Macosta to fill an expired term on the Youth Commission, term to expire February of 2024.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments?
I've had an opportunity to have a nice conversation with Shane and his family, and I am absolutely convinced that not only will he be a great addition to the Youth Commission, but I think someday he'll be on a city council himself. Thank you.
Great. Any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call will begin with Council Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Ms. D Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yeah.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Now, I could also, to 2001, I moved prove the appointment with Haze of 165 Parks, an unexpired term. Cultural Council term to expire February 2020.
Second. You're cutting out, you're cutting.
Motion's in order. Any additional comments?
I'd just kill, be a great addition. He's excited.
Okay, roll call vote will begin with Council Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Ms. D Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yeah.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
And the docket of September 1st. The one I entertain a motion, strike the following. To fill an unexpired term, will counsel term to expire February 2023.
Just second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments?
By the re of of Marine.
So I just want to confirm, Ty, because you've been cutting out when you've been speaking since more.
We'll move to Council Reynolds is going to take over.
Okay, thank you.
And then Council Reynolds is going to take over because I'm having just as hard time as everybody else.
Thank you.
I can't hear it from my end, so thank you.
Yeah, so any additional questions on the up?
No.
A roll call will begin with Counselor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. D Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes. Council Reynolds, do you have copies that you can refer to now or do you, uh, who's the third on this committee? Council Blair.
Council Blair, so.
President Cooper, I don't have them in front of me. I'd have to post an email, so I'd have to like a a time.
May I step in?
Then I will go in, but I don't have mine printed.
Yeah, so.
Does anybody else?
Your computer keeps freezing and I think you're frozen right now. So why don't we, oh, no, you're moving.
Okay. Try it.
No, I, Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Why don't you just move the rest of these motions if you have?
I will. Thank you ever so kindly. From the docket of September 21, 2021, I intend a motion to strike the following. The appointment of Robert Capella of 300 Bishop Street to fill an expired term on the Traffic Study Commission, term to expire February 2024.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any additional comments?
I have none.
Thank you. A roll call vote will begin with Counselor Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Ms. D Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to read the following one, and if I'm wrong in how I'm reading it, because I'm not sure how um, Council Waterman wanted to present it, so I'm just going to read it as it is, okay? Docket of September 21, 2021, I intend a motion to add a grade three position of community engagement manager to the exempt classification plan. A request to re-transfer funding for this position will be sent later.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments? Council Waterman, you can, you can try to make comments. Have any now? That's fine.
I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I. It is a, that greatly in us. I mean, some no's, so.
Point of what, Ty, if you try shutting your camera off, it might help.
Try to, try to stop the video if you can, Ty. That may help.
If my wife's, this is my wife's computer. She's, she's not here and I'm not sure how it operates. Sorry.
Okay, any additional questions or comments?
Just a comment, Mr. Cooper. I think the reason it come down that way with no figures is because it depends on when they're going to hire. So that's why the funding request will be later, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
He's shaking his head, so.
Uh, Counselor Conti and then Delicio.
I just want to say that this position is very important for the city and the future of the City of Attleboro. And I, I know, I mean, I'm, I'm fiscally, I consider myself to be a fiscally conservative guy, but I'd be willing to fund this position at a, at a very high level if we got a very high level person, because what I'm seeing happen in that department is stunning, absolutely stunning. So I encourage my councils to, and to pass this measure tonight and move forward on the position, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Counselor Delicio.
Uh, thank you, President Cooper. Two things. One, Council Conti, I agree 100% with everything you just said. Secondly, wasn't this voted out of committee last week with a dollar figure attached to it?
No. No. Can you, if you can hear me.
No, we can hear you. I, I thought there was discussion about it because it was, and I raised concern that there was a dollar amount.
Let me check. Yes, there was. Thank you. Can you, if you can hear me.
We can hear you.
The dollar amount was $21,571.41.
So are you making a motion to amend?
If it, I'll finish. If it, if this position begins on January 1st, which it probably won't.
What was?
I'll make that one.
Can I?
Hold on for a minute.
So there is a posting.
Hold on, hold on.
Sorry.
I need to know exactly the way it was voted out of committee because that is the way it should be presented to the council.
I entertain a motion to add a grade three position of community engagement manager to the exempt classification plan. A request to transfer funding, no, excuse me. This, this position will be funded for $21,571.41 as of January 1st.
Second.
Wait, you can't second. I've already seconded. You've already, somebody already seconded it.
Stop.
I have to like, stop.
Stop, stop, stop.
Yeah.
Until January. So, and then you'll run it in January.
Thank.
Until.
I'm so mad about that now.
Until, until somebody else is the council president. So the, the, the original mot, I need to understand this because we want to get it right. The original motion before the committee had the line, a request to transfer funding for this position will be sent later. Is that? And then it was amended in the committee to include the dollar amount sentence that you've read. Is that?
It was amended in the committee.
Okay, great. So we, Council Conti seconded the, this position will be funded as of 1/1/2022, and I'll accept that as an amendment to the motion that was presented to the council. So right now, we're talking about the motion as amended to include, to strike the sentence, a request for transfer funding for this position will be sent later. And to include a statement that says this position will be funded at $21,571.41 as of 1/1/2022. Any questions about the?
Yes, I do.
Vice President Jackson.
So today, when I was in the city council office, the posting is up on the, on the office wall, you know, they have all the postings she has. Virginia has all the postings of anything that's going on, Hall that, all the new postings. And I can't remember what it read, but it read like from $21.40 to $21.40. I don't know. So yeah, this motion, it can't be right right now.
So it probably is.
We have to wait until next week to actually read this motion because we have to get it correct.
So I think that it.
What happened last week? I can't remember what. I, and the, the posting is posted for a certain amount from one amount to another amount. So you can't say it's going to be $21,000. We don't know. Right? Because if they're going to make $21.40 an hour and someone might, if they're more qualified, they're going to make $27,000, $20.50 an hour. I don't know, but just, yeah, I'm not sure if this is correct. That's all.
So if this is the way it came out of committee, then this is the way it has to be presented to the council. The posting in the office is for a full year salary.
Right.
Very roughly speaking, $21 an hour is about $42,000 per year. Half of 42,000 is 21,000. So this funds it at that salary. If they need more loot, they got to come back to all of you. Plain and simple. So I'm fine with moving forward at, but I'm not, I'm not fine if the motion doesn't pass to amend that Council Conti seconded. So Counselor Delicio and then Reynolds.
Thank you, President Cooper. So Jeremy Stall was here last week in the committee and I raised a concern because I'm not used to seeing a dollar amount um, attached to these sort of positions, and it's not often that we do them. Jeremy explained exactly what you just did. And Kate, I fully understand, and even in postings that I have through work, we have to put a range in there because you want to be able to attract the right candidate. So that range is still, as President Cooper said, will still be that 42,000, which is what the approximation was that Jeremy used last week when he was here. The only reason I remember this is because I challenged it on the floor last week.
Thank you. Any, Counselor Reynolds.
Uh, Counselor Cooper, I just wanted to say basically that what you said was definitely on, on point. That we went over this with Jeremy last week. Um, I thought the money should be in there, and so we read it that way because Jeremy explained it. So 21,000 is fine.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments on the motion as, no, on the amendment? Seeing none, a roll call will begin with Council Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Dee Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion. Uh, amendment passes now on to the main motion as amended. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing now in a roll call, we'll begin with Counselor Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Dee Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Well, that concludes the business of the Personnel, Veterans and Human Services Committee. We'll meet at the next appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh. Vice President Jackson.
Thank you, President Cooper. Reporting for the Public Works Committee, from the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one. I entertain a motion to appropriate seventy five thousand five hundred ninety seven dollars from the undesignated fund balance free general government account to the park heavy truck purchase to twenty twenty two Ford F one fifty, so the park and forestry departments. Thank you, Counselor Delicio.
Thank you. Movements in order. Any additional comments?
I do not. Um Superintendent, Orsi was here this evening to discuss this. And everyone, anyone who had questions asked, and that was it.
Great, thank you. A roll call will begin with Counselor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Dee Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes. Who seconded that, Steve? Did you?
Uh, Jay, Jay.
Yes, he did. From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one, I entertain a motion to appropriate seventy three thousand two hundred four dollars and eighty cents from the undesignated fund balance free cash general government account to the Cape and Park Zoo Building Improvements Account to fund project at Cape and Park and Zoo that are safety and well-being of the patrons and the animals, in addition to meet requirements of the AZA accreditation for twenty twenty two.
Movements in order. Any additional comments?
We discussed this just a short time ago.
We'll begin with Counselor Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Ms. Dee Simone.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. So I have several others, and um I had the um superintendents from every department here two weeks ago discuss all these. And we did not have any interruptions or problems, and everybody got to answer all their questions. So I'm just gonna read ahead. That's okay, President Cooper.
Fine by me.
Thank you. From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one, I moved to appropriate two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars from the Water Enterprise Fund retained earning account to fund three 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 nine PFAS PFAS for engineering and design services for temporary PFAS treatment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A roll, unless anybody has any questions, roll call will begin with Counselor Holmes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Dee Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of December seventh, twenty one, I moved to appropriate one hundred and forty one thousand dollars from account Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings to fund three three four zero undirectional flush system for for engineering services related to the development of an undirectional flushing program.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor.
Anything to order? Any additional comments?
I have none.
All will begin with Counselor Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Ms. Dee Simone.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of December twenty twenty one, I moved to appropriate three hundred nine thousand one hundred forty nine thousand dollars from account Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government to the following. One hundred and seventy thousand six hundred twenty eight dollars to the Public Works Dump Trucks and one hundred and thirty eight thousand five hundred twenty one dollars to account Public Works Replacement Trucks to purchase two dump trucks and two pickup trucks, the DPW.
Thank you. Movements in order. Any additional comments?
I have none.
A roll call will begin with Counselor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Dee Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. I move to appropriate one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, nine hundred thirty seven thousand dollars to undesignate and balance free cash general government to account Public Works Capital Snow Equipment to purchase a new trackless MT seven sidewalk machine WV plow and snow blower attachment for DPW.
Thank you. Movements in order. Any additional comments?
I have none.
Thank you. A roll call will begin with Counselor Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Ms. Dee Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one, I moved to appropriate two hundred and thirty nine thousand eight hundred dollars from the account Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government to the Public Works Loader Account, the DPW, to purchase a John Deere six two four Ford WD motor.
Thank you. Movements in order. Any additional comments?
I have none.
A roll call will begin with Counselor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Dee Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty, I moved to appropriate nine thousand nine hundred dollars from the Undesignated Fund Balance Free Account Cash General Government Account. The Recreation New Playground Account Equipment to replace two basketball hoops at Conley Playground.
Thank you. Movements in order. Any additional comments? Roll call will begin with Counselor Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Ms. Dee Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one, I moved to appropriate thirty five thousand one hundred eighty four dollars in the Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government Account to the Recreation Mower Account, the Recreation Department, to purchase a John Deere Terrain Cut mower.
Second.
Thank you.
Movements in order. Any additional comments? Thank you. A roll call will begin with Counselor Holmes.
Uh, Ms. Holmes. Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Dee Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one, I moved to appropriate seventy five thousand seven hundred dollars from the Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government Account to the continuing approch- appropriation recreation site improvements for the remediation of four softball softball fields at the South Atamoa Veterans Memorial Park.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Movements in order. Any additional questions? A roll call will begin with Counselor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yeah.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Dee Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you.
Thank you. From the docket of November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, I moved to appropriate twenty two thousand four hundred and forty dollars Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings to the Water Enterprise Fund Van Purchase Account and appropriate fourteen thousand nine hundred sixty dollars from the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings account to the Water Enterprise Fund Van Purchase Account for a new Ford T two fifty Transit van to be shared by the Water and Wastewater Departments.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Delicio.
Thank you. Uh, motions in order. Any additional comments?
I have none.
A roll call will begin with Counselor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Dee Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. And lastly, from the docket of November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, I moved to appropriate nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety two dollars from the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings account to the Water Enterprise Fund Replacement Truck Account and appropriate thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty eight dollars from the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings account to the Water Enterprise Fund Replacement Truck Account for a new Ford Ranger four by four Supercab to be shared by the Water and Wastewater Departments.
Second.
Thank you. Movements in order. Any additional comments? A roll call will begin with Counselor Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Ms. Dee Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. I have no further business this evening for the um Public Works Department, however. I was Oprah tonight. I gave away a car to everybody or a truck or somebody to, everybody got a vehicle. Um, so that concludes the business this evening for the Public Works Committee, and I would ask for a committee meeting next week at the appropriate time.
Great, thank you. Uh, Counselor Delicio.
Thank you, President Cooper, reporting for budget appropriations. I have several items, um approximately sixteen. Um, I guess I just wanna say again, reiterate what I said earlier in um committee. Reason I held a lot of this is I wanted to ensure that I have the opportunity to speak with Jeremy Stall, the mayor, as well as Deb Gould um to get my arms around really the need around these. Um, so that being said, from the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one, I entertain a motion to transfer ninety nine dollars and ninety eight cents from account Library Supplies to library previous year bills for a W B Mason Fiscal Twenty One Bill.
Second.
Thank you. Movements in order. Any additional comments?
I have none.
Roll call will begin with Counselor Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Ms. Dee Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of December seventh, twenty one, I entertain a motion to appropriate forty eight thousand five hundred from account wa- wastewater enterprise fund return, uh retained earnings to account wastewater enterprise fund lights and power to replenish funds needed for a state compliance program.
Second.
Thank you. Movements in order. Any additional comments?
I have none.
A roll call, I believe, will begin with Counselor Holmes.
Yes. Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Dee Simone.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper. President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one, I entertain a motion to appropriate forty-nine thousand two hundred dollars from account Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings to account Water Enterprise Fund meter survey to meet a requirement for the Water Management Act withdrawal permit.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments?
I have none. We went over this earlier.
Thank you. A roll call will begin with Counselor Blair.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Ms. De Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Mr. Kovas?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one, I entertain a motion to appropriate five hundred thousand dollars from account undesigned fund balance free cash general government to account citywide stabilization fund.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments?
On this one, I do, I appreciate half a million going into the stabilization account with the amount of money that we received in free cash. Granted, we had to spend a lot of money earlier on in the night, and even with some of these purchases, those are what we need for the city to continue to provide the services residents rely on and depend on. However, I would like to see more money going into the stabilization account. I'm really concerned with what the fiscal future is going to look, not just here in the city of Attleboro for fiscal twenty-three and four. We already seen what inflation is doing, and I would like to ensure that we're fiscally prudent with the rest of the money and continue to build up the stabilization account.
Thank you. A roll call will begin with Counselor Blair.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Ms. De Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Mr. Kovas?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one, I entertain a motion to appropriate twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents from account undesigned fund balance free cash general government to the following assessor copias, collective copias, police copias.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments?
I know we read the dollar amounts of the accounts into the record earlier. This is just to confirm, it's one printer for the assessor, one for the collector, I'm sorry, copier for the assessor, the collector, and two for the police.
Thank you. The roll call will begin with Counselor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Kovas?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. De Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one, I entertain a motion to authorize the payment of invoices to the Attleboro YMCA in the amount of twenty-three thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and cents on behalf of the Planning Department for its transfers needed.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions? Comments?
I'll just say that this is to fulfill obligations through the CBDDG.
Thank you. A roll call will begin with Counselor Blair.
Blair?
Yes.
Ms. De Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Mr. Kovas?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thanks from the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one, I entertain a motion to appropriate sixty-three hundred dollars from account undesigned fund balance free cash general government to account school maintenance building contracted services to repair the old schoolhouse at Hill Roberts Elementary School.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions?
I have none.
Roll call will begin with Counselor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yeah.
Mr. Kovas?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. De Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one, I entertain a motion to appropriate sixteen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars from account undesigned fund balance free cash general government to account school maintenance of building contracted services to repair the Muggsville Schoolhouse at Studley Elementary.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments?
I know, President Cooper, we discussed both of these earlier in committee.
Thank you. A roll call will begin with Counselor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Kovas?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. De Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, I entertain a motion to transfer seventeen thousand five hundred from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account assessor G I S services to renew the N M A P subscription.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments?
What I would say is I would urge passage on this one. I think this is really important to the assessor's job, as Counselor Conti talked about earlier in committee. It usually had services, it will pay for itself just with the fees that are collected. This is something that will help the assessor, the police department, the fire department, the planning department be able to better fulfill duties of their jobs.
Thank you. A roll call will begin with Counselor Blair.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Ms. De Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Mr. Kovas?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes. Yes.
Looks like Steve froze.
President Cooper, did I freeze?
You did.
Hello? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, I entertain a motion to appropriate three hundred thousand dollars from account undesigned fund balance free cash general government to account citywide contribution to special education stabilization.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments?
Briefly, President Cooper, I feel this is an important transfer as it is going to go into the special ed stabilization account. And this is a moving target every single year, so the more that we can be prepared, where we are, especially with so many unknowns that we could be facing in the next couple of fiscal years. And the reality is, it can be reallocated to if there are needs where it is in the stabilization account. It can be reallocated.
Great, thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing none, a roll call will begin with Counselor Blair.
Blair?
Yes.
Ms. De Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Mr. Kovas?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, I entertain a motion to authorize the school department to pay previous year school bills totaling fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents, including a Conicum Minolta bill and a W B Mason bill.
Second.
Thank you. No, any additional comments?
Briefly, I want to thank the business director at schools, Mark Fritato, for helping me understand this piece. And really Deb Gould in her office for catching an error, the half of the vendor. Because of that error, Deb initially denied the, Deb's office denied this purchase order. We're going through the process again, and as such, it was received after the cutoff for the fiscal year, which is why we're doing this now. We'll then go back up to Deb's office to make sure that everything is right. Once it's right, it will be authorized for payment.
Thank you. A roll call will begin with Counselor Blair. I mean, I think it's Holmes, actually.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Kovas?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. De Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, President Cooper. From the docket of November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, I entertain a motion to transfer four thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account assessors, monitors, printers, other, to fund a new printer for the assessor's office.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments?
Yeah, this printer is different than the copier for the assessor's office. This is going to have digital scanning capabilities, which will be able to help to scan and digitize some of the files.
Great. Any additional comments? Seeing none, a roll call will begin with Counselor Blair.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Ms. De Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Mr. Kovas?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, President Cooper. From the docket of November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, I entertain a motion to transfer one thousand six hundred dollars from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account council on aging building maintenance to repair the lower level roof.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order.
My comments will go for this motion and the next. We all know the problems that facility standpoint at senior center, there are things that are going to go. This has been an issue, this leak, as well as the next one, which is the cast iron drainpipe in the basement. I remember going down there several times with Madeline and seeing that. This is all, you know, we need to keep this building running for at least another three, four, five years until we can go through the proper process of getting the feasibility study through capital improvements, vetting the next location appropriately, getting the funding teed up. So it's going to take time, and in the interim, we need to take care of the facility that we have.
Thank you. A roll call will begin with Counselor Holmes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Kovas?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. De Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, I entertain a motion to transfer sixty-five hundred from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account council on aging building maintenance to repair cast iron drainpipe in the basement of senior center.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments?
I have none.
Thank you. A roll call will begin with Counselor Blair.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Ms. De Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Mr. Kovas?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yeah.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, I entertain a motion to transfer six hundred and forty-five dollars from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account collector office equipment to purchase a new typewriter for the collector's office.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments?
Yes, it's a typewriter. Yes, it's twenty twenty one. We have a good chuckle about this in committee, but this is an honor to be able to fill out some of the forms. So it's the collectors, and I think even the clerk, they don't have access to all the forms on Munis or to be printed via the computer, so they need the typewriters. The collector has been really, really good about getting refurbished machines, which don't last long, so you know, kudos is out of for asking for this.
Great. A roll call vote will begin with Counselor Holmes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Kovas?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. De Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
And finally, from the docket of November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, I entertain a motion to appropriate four hundred thousand dollars from undesigned fund balance free cash general government to account citywide stabilization.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments?
Yeah, briefly, just because it's a big one. So this is part, the third installment of interest on the bonds for the school. Interest with the project has to stay with the project. So the decision was made by the administration going back to bury the cast in January of twenty eighteen. Repayments of interest on the bonds of four hundred thousand dollars each for one point two million dollars, which will further be used to defray the cost to the taxpayer and will be used for the transferring of the C T E equipment from the current school to the new school, as well as to remove and remediate all the asbestos prior to destruction of the, or demolition of the current school to ensure that when the demolition happens, that the asbestos isn't getting into the air.
Great. A roll call vote will begin with Counselor Blair.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Ms. De Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Vice President Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Mr. Kovas?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thanks, President Cooper. That is all the business for budget appropriation.
Will you close? I have the upper money, the nine point five million.
Yeah, I'm holding that.
Did you vote that out of committee?
I did not. I'm actually gonna, I'm working with Deb on, well, since you brought it up, if I could, a little bit of leeway before I wrap. I'm working with Deb really to see what we can authorize and how that works, as opposed to just giving cop launch of nine five, nine point six million dollars. So we just want to get some more parameters around it. I'd like to actually see the budget that Jeremy showed us, so we understand where it's going. The worst thing we can do is where we have until twenty twenty four to expend it, is to expend it all in one fell swoop. That being said, now I would like to call for a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Great, thank you. Counselor Kovas?
Zoning and land use committee does not have any business site, but we call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Counselor Dolan.
Thank you, President Cooper. For the chunk of class two, I know previously I just read the name of the business. Would you like me to do that this evening?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one, I move to approve an automatic amusement device license application from Chuck E. Cheese's of two eighty-seven Washington Street with twelve video games and fifty-two skills slash kitty games.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any additional comments?
No.
A roll call will begin with Counselor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Kovas.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
I was out of the room.
Okay. Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Deesimo.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero names.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one, I moved to approve a class one license request from Priority Automotive, D V A, Serone Chevy, uh, Buick and GMC Truck at one oh three Washington Street with eighty four customer and twenty eight split, two hundred and eighty eight display spaces.
Second.
Thank you. Movements in order. Any additional comments?
None.
Thank you. A roll call will begin with Council Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Ms. Deesimo.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Mr. Kovas.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero names.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one, I move to approve the following class two license renewal application. Applications ninety seven Emory Street LLC and ninety seven Emory Street, Landmark Auto Sales, State Line Auto Brokers, Mike's Automotive, Pine Crest Motors, By Rider, Car Town USA, Lindus Family Auto, New England Cars, Best Buy Automotive, M J Auto Sales, Vashon Motors, South Attleboro Auto Sales and Route one twenty three Village Auto Sales.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any additional comments?
None.
Council Dolan, just, um, the, um, dealership that we received some information today from the state of Massachusetts. That's not in this list, right?
No, it's not. But it, but it's already gone through.
Okay, thank you.
We've already approved that license.
Great, thank you. Uh, any additional questions? A roll call will begin with Council Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes, sorry.
Mr., that's all right, Mr. Kovas.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Deesimo.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero names.
Thank you. Motion passes.
That's all the business I have for license committee and I'd like to call for a, um, committee meeting at the next appropriate time, please.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Council Reynolds.
Thank you. Uh, reporting for a city property and claims committee. Um, I move to declare the following fire department vehicle is surplus and available for disposition. A two thousand and six Ford ambulance. It has one hundred thousand miles. It's in average condition.
Thank you. Movements in order. Any additional comments?
I have none.
Thank you. A roll call will begin with Council Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Ms. Deesimo.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Vice President Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Kovas.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero names.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of December seventh, twenty twenty one, I move to declare the following clerk's office equipment is surplus and available for disposition. Uh, Rico copia, it, the condition is poor.
Zero second. Thank you. Movements in order. Any additional comments?
I have none.
Roll call will begin with Council Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Kovas.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.